The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Welcome to the August 4, 2020, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
And Mayor Mario.
Here, thank you very much. We have a ceremonial item, Ms. Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item one, employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Casey, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, each month, we like to recognize employees for achieving milestones in their service to the city. So I have a number of names I'd like to read into the record. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone to receive their pins in person. We will celebrate and let them get their information through their departments. So with five years of service to the city, Pam Antil, Assistant City Administrator, City Administrator's Office, Manuel Gonzalez, Parking Enforcement Officer, Police Department, Porfirio Diaz, Treatment Plant Technician, Public Works Department, and Dan Rowell, Environmental Services Specialist II, Sustainability and Resiliency Department. With 10 years of service, Simone Perez, Senior Waste Water Collection Systems Operator, Public Works Department, and Jerry Holcomb, Grounds Maintenance Worker One, Parks and Recreation Department. With 15 years of service, Catherine Schmidt, Senior Network Applications Analyst with the Police Department, Herman Padilla, Parking Enforcement Officer, Police Department, Tim Burgess, Associate Planner, Parks and Recreation Department, and Jill Murray, Water Quality Research Analyst, Parks and Recreation Department. And with 20 years of service to the city, Greg Corral, Purchasing Department, Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank those employees and we honor their service. Congratulations, everybody. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thanks. We'll move to the public comment period, and this is the council's opportunity to hear from the public. Items that are not on our official agenda. So take a look at the agenda, and if you're here for a specific item, please wait. This is, like I said, items that are not on the agenda. Ms. Clerk, do we have people raising their hand for general public comment? And thanks, Ms., my councilmember should come on to the screen. Go ahead, Ms. Gorman.
Very good. Madam Mayor and council, we have a number of persons who have raised their hand. Please raise your hand in the app if you did want, wish to speak on items not on the agenda. You can wait to raise your hand if you wish to speak on a later item. Also, feel free to send a message within the GoToWebinar app to me saying what item you wish to speak on. Our first speakers here for public comment not on the agenda are going to be Eric Davis, Elena Velasco, Alexandra Knocker, Stephanie Petlow, and Linda Matthews. Eric Davis. We're going to queue up a video here for you, I believe. And Eric Davis.
El Perdizente, Eric Davis?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to, on behalf of the Board of Old Spanish Days Fiesta, I just wanted to say thank you for your support as we bring forward a safe and reimagined Fiesta. I saw some of you as we spread a little joy with Los Niños de las Flores. And after this, under Alexandra Knocker, the spirit and junior spirit will say a little thank you. But to get things started, we have a little video hug for you for Los Niños de las Flores. And thanks again for all your support, and viva la fiesta.
Viva.
Viva la fiesta!
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 La fiesta!
Viva 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 la fiesta, everyone!
Thank you. Next speaker? Oh, Eric, or Mr. Davis? Do we have more festivities, Ms. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we have Elena Velasco and Alexandra Knocker. I don't see Elena Velasco, so we'll go to Alexandra Knocker. Alexandra Knocker, please go ahead.
Hi, I have Elena here with me.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Elena. I'd just like to take a minute to thank the City Council for all that you've done in supporting us through these hard times and supporting us throughout all of Fiesta. And I appreciate all your support and your positive energy that you've all given us throughout all this.
Hi, this is Alexandra. I just would like to take a minute to thank you all for supporting us in all the virtual events that we have had and letting us dance and letting us have a Fiesta. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your dancing, and we're proud of you, our junior spirit and Spirit of Fiesta 2020.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I just say a word to the flower niños? It's so wonderful every year, and it's such a great tradition. And I love seeing so many of my children's friends and children in the community. And it's so great to see these children grow over the years. And I really want to thank them for taking the time to put this together so that we get to receive their joy. So just thank you.
Nice, thank you. More public comment speakers?
Yes, our next speaker is Stephanie Petlow. I don't see Ms. Petlow, we can come back to her. Linda Matthews, Linda Matthews? Please go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes.
All right, I have a little feedback there. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. It is a little bit strange to be speaking to you by phone instead of standing up with our student ambassadors, but this is Linda Matthews from the Santa Barbara Tobas Sister Cities Organization. And I have the distinct pleasure today to read out a proclamation just recently signed by our mayor proclaiming Santa Barbara Tobas Japan Peace Week, August 5 through 12, 2020. Whereas, August 6 and 9, 2020, marked the 75th anniversary of the atomic bombings of the Japanese cities of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, respectively. And whereas, the end of World War II shortly after the bombings ushered in an end of continual peace between the United States of America and Japan. And whereas, in 1956, President Eisenhower with great foresight created organizations like the Sister Cities International to advance peace worldwide through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation between people across the globe. And whereas, visible proof of the long-lasting peaceful relationship between America and Japan is present right here in Santa Barbara, where we have enjoyed a wonderfully enriching cross-cultural relationship with our sister city Toba since 1966. And whereas, the vibrant, friendly, culturally enlightening exchanges between the Santa Barbara branch and its sister in Toba epitomizing enduring post-war relationship of peace between the United States and Japan that extends beyond our community to over 455 sister cities between our two countries. And whereas bell ringing has long represented peace in the United States. And in Japan, the new year bell ringing marks the start of a new era. Therefore, Santa Barbara is honored to join communities across America and Japan participating in bell ringing ceremonies in remembrance of the historic bombings 75 years ago. And in tribute to the Japanese-American post-war bond formed decades ago that ushered in a new perpetual era of peace. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Morillo, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim the week of August 5 to 12 as Santa Barbara Tobas Japan Peace Week. And I encourage residents of both cities to commemorate the occasion by participating in a bell ringing ceremony, individually at home, virtually, or in a safe public area, taking care to observe all public health orders and advisories. And our mayor fixed her signature there, too, on the 4th of August. And the bell ringing to which this wonderful proclamation refers is going to be a simultaneous bell ringing between Santa Barbara and Toba on Wednesday, August 5. The program will start at 4:00 PM, just outside of City Hall, and the bell ringing will commence at 4:15. We really hope that the spirit of this bell ringing will resonate with all members of the community. And we invite you to bring bells, big and small, houses of worship, critters, the mission will participate, but bring handbells, cowbells, cowbells, anything. And you'll have two opportunities to ring your bell for peace. The first with us at 4:15 Wednesday, August 5. Or you may also join the second bell ringing, 7:02 PM on Saturday. And this will confide either with the actual time of the atomic bombing of Hiroshima or later of the bombing of Nagasaki. We encourage all of you to look into becoming members of the Santa Barbara Tobas Japan Sister Cities. And we look forward, Madam Mayor, to seeing you tomorrow on the steps of the City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, for organizing that event and for all you do with Santa Barbara Tobas Sister Cities group. And I think some other councilmembers will be out there tomorrow. Thank you so much for reading the proclamation today. Ms. Clerk, do we have more speakers for our public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is, and I'll read several out here, Lee Heller, Andy Davis, Rochelle Monae, Dan Vilano, Natasha Torodovick, Anna Marie Gott, Michael Funnigan, John Campanella, and Stephanie Petlow. So next is Lee Heller.
And a reminder that these are items not on the agenda. This is the open comment, public comment, not on the agenda. Thanks.
Lee Heller, please go ahead. You're unmuted.
Madam Mayor and council, I did not raise my hand, actually. I'm speaking on a later item, so I'm not sure why I'm being called now. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, we'll come back.
Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Andy Davis. Andy Davis, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers, for hearing me today. I just wanted, I'm a manager of a local bar who is now behaving as we are a restaurant. And I'm just wanting to confirm with you, members of the council, to let you know that we are all doing our part to continue to be, provide a safe, food-oriented experience for us, who are members who hold a Class 48 liquor license. So we're just wanting to make sure that you all know that we are taking our responsibility heavily and trying to control our attendance and trying to control the environment in which our guests can come in and dine and drink. In case there was any kind of thoughts that you guys may be on, be broaching, considering closing hours or expanding our hours or... Yeah, I just wanted to let you all know that we are, that we're taking this COVID closed down, the spatial separation seriously. And also, I want to take this opportunity to thank you all for making it so we can provide that outdoor seating for all of us to expand our business in this time of uncertainty and in this time of difficulties. So, thank you for taking the time to hear me. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Rochelle Monae. Rochelle Monae, please go ahead.
Hi Kathy, how are you? Well, I hope. So on June 15, I brought an issue to this council's attention, and I quote, "Anthony Wagner was an aide to a San Diego city council member who was subject to an FBI cash bribery investigation that led to jail time for the city council member and strip club owner." I then also brought it to your attention, and I quote, "Mr. Wagner in charge of..." Is that you put Mr. Wagner in charge of a highly prized cannabis dispensary permitting process? Well, let me tell you something. Mr. Wagner had ties to one of those groups from San Diego that got awarded one of the highly prized sellers licenses in town. The same group that got awarded the license didn't have adequate parking or funds for the building to begin with. This same group has already sold the license or wants to sell it for millions of dollars cash. I made these statements, and I have it on video, on June 15, 2020. Well, as we all know, last week, my statement was validated, and now you are all subject to an FBI investigation. You cannot say that you were not aware, as I have footage of me telling you. We have been watching you, Paul Casey, scramble since I've made these statements, trying to cover your tracks. We have been documenting everything since Mr. Wagner was placed in charge of the cannabis decision process, as we knew that his corrupt past behavior would follow him here to our beautiful city. For all of you who are at City Hall and have been aware of the corruption but didn't partake in it, this is your last chance to speak up and do the right thing, or you will go down with your corrupt colleagues. Both we and you know who you are. I just want to remind you that you work for the people of the city of Santa Barbara. And it's time that somebody reminds you of this. Megan, Alejandra, Kristen, Oscar, Mike, Eric, Kathy, Paul, we have been watching you and documenting everything. And I'm so excited that you have allowed this cannabis license to be sold, because it's exactly what I wanted. Thank you. I'm done.
Very good. Next speaker, please?
Next speaker is Dan Vilano, then Natasha Torodovick, Anna Marie Gott, Michael Funnigan, John Campanella, Stephanie Petlow, and Brandon. Next is Dan Vilano. Dan Vilano, please go ahead.
Wonderful beginning to your meeting today, very festive, very upbeat. Congrats to all the employees. However, I wanted to jump a little bit ahead to the Planning Commission, which is working on the mobile home park overlay, which is mostly on the east side. I want to say that mobile home living is an ugly hybrid. It is not going to provide you with future senior low-cost housing. Not when there's a huge loophole in the city mobile home vacancy rent change compared to the county. The county clamps down on homes that are sold to a maximum of 10% increase. The Santa Barbara loophole, which is proven by our current and new aggressive owners, it is unlimited. Realistically, it is unlimited. It makes our homes unsalable. Many seniors, when they leave your home, it's because they can no longer live alone. So I just want to get ahead. When your planning commission comes to you, I've asked them to put more teeth in any recommendations they make to you. And that's all we want you to know. You're not on the same path as the county. We follow the county's guidelines in many areas, but not mobile home rent control. And I'm not talking about the annual increase. As you all know, I'm simply talking about when a home is sold to another person, the owner of the park can raise the rent to whatever they deem they want to, which in effect stops the sale. They may acquire the home after that. They also add many burdens to a seller before that seller can even sell a home. So anyway, I hate to, my comments to be on such a down note. It was a wonderful start to your meeting, and I thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thanks. Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Natasha Torodovick, followed by Anna Marie Gott, Michael Funnigan, John Campanella, Stephanie Petlow, Brandon Ristano, and Cassandra Ensberg. Natasha Torodovick? Natasha Torodovick, please go ahead.
Um, so I would like to actually thank councilmembers Gutierrez and Friedman, and particularly Alejandra Gutierrez, and also Paul Casey and the Police Department. I think we had a really nice progress on the CVS case for the east side. And it really started bringing out a lot of issues. On Melpus, we have a limit by the ABC of four off-sale liquor licenses, but we've got nine. That's 225% more than we need to have. CVS in and of itself will be adding an entire liquor store with the square footage that they're able to add in terms of liquor. And what we've learned from this is that the city doesn't have the control that it needs to be able to shape the future of our city in the way that we need to see it. Speaking with the Police Department, learned that the way the numbers are calculated and assembled doesn't show the problems that we live with very clearly. And until the Police Department broke it down by square mile, what they found was 67 calls for service per square mile. And in the 300, 400 block of Melpus Street, we, CVS alone, had 62. Here, we're at 279. So the problem with alcohol is prevalent. It's impacting us economically. It's impacting us health-wise. It's impacting us socially. The impacts to property owners that are limiting their ability to rent to better businesses decreases possible wages. And we had a small win, so I appreciate that. I thank you for it. Councilmember Gutierrez, I'd like to ask you, please, to examine this thing they call public convenience or necessity. Which public is the alcohol for? Convenient for whom? Necessary for whom? I'd love to see us study this PCN ruling that the PD perpetually gives to these liquor licenses. I think we need to look at density. I think we need to look for calls for service. I think we need to look at the domestic violence. I think we need to look at the costs to the city for first responders and why they're going into lower socioeconomic neighborhoods. And I think we need to stand for a better city. I think we deserve a better city. And I appreciate the efforts that you made to move in that direction, and we need more. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Anna Marie Gott, followed by Michael Funnigan, John Campanella, Stephanie Petlow, Brandon Ristano, Cassandra Ensberg, Natasha Gavoni, Crystal Barrows, and Mike J. Anna Marie Gott?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. To add to Natasha's comments, I'd like to just mention that last weekend, I actually called dispatch because there were three people at Crown Liquor who were sitting on the corner drinking. This is not the first time that I have actually called about individuals drinking in public. And, you know, one of the most memorable ones was actually having witnessed someone come out of CVS and stumble across the street to the opposite corner, not in the crosswalk, but literally diagonally across the street. The individual was drunk, and I had to call dispatch or 911, and that was a year or so ago. So there is a prevalent problem at this location, as well as other locations in more disadvantaged areas of our community. And our police calls for service are severely underestimated. This also takes money out of services that you could actually put in other areas, such as the library or a public park, because you were actually channeling money to the Police Department for something that they are responsible for actually permitting in the city. They know every single time they permit one of these licenses that there are going to be increasing calls for service, which increases the amount of money that we pay as taxpayers and the city pays out of its general fund for calls for service for the Police Department. It just literally doesn't make any sense. I sent you an email yesterday. You can easily add one item to your agenda for next week to remove this authority from the Police Department so that it actually has to have a decision made. so that it actually has to have a decision made by the city council. And you can do this in such a time as you make a decision for an alcohol ordinance, which is desperately needed in the city. On another note, last week, you halted the destruction of the documents for the November fifth, two thousand and nineteen election. However, not one city staff member has communicated with any of the individuals who made public records requests at dating back as far as last year that were received by the city. I just have to ask you, in a time in which transparency with the government federally is becoming worse every day, why is it that our city is refusing to provide information on an election? It's really simple. People just want information on the election, but the city will not provide it. I ask you that you ensure that this actually be provided. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker, please. And I think we can take all the speakers that you had mentioned, Ms. Clerk, and that would take us to our thirty-minute time limit. Go ahead.
Very good. Our next speaker is Michael Funnican, then John Campanella, Stephanie Petlow, Brandon Ristano, Cassandra Ensberg, Natasha Gavoni, Crystal Barrows, and Mike J. Michael Funnigan? Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Today, I'm here to present to you what we have had to deal with trying to gain approval for an accessory dwelling unit for our property here on the mesa. Some background on our family, we are a longtime resident of Santa Barbara, working hard and contributing to our local economy for over forty years. We have been owner, operators of the Hornet Sports Casino in nineteen eighties and nineties. And I have for the last fifteen years been captain of the Little Toot water taxi. My wife has managed many of the hotels on West Beach since nineteen ninety-five. Now to the issues. For a small two-bedroom unit for my son, daughter-in-law, and granddaughter to live in, the city permitting process has taken almost two years. The city permitting fees are over twenty-one thousand dollars. How can a process that takes close to two years with these outrageous fees possibly support the need for affordable housing? Let me review a few dates to help you understand. September two thousand and eighteen, almost two years ago, we initially filed for the permits. April two thousand and nineteen, we resubmitted revisions based on comments the city staff required. Additionally, city staff required us to involve the Department of Oil and Gas to get recommendations on an oil well on the property. There are hundreds of oil wells on the Mesa properties, by the way, so beware if you have a property with an oil well on it. Over the next few months, we had to work with the Department of Oil and Gas Agencies in the city where no one would make any recommendations, essentially an impasse. We had no idea how to handle this, no support, except referring us to oil rig removal companies that remove multi-acre oil-filled drillers. September two thousand and nineteen, year one after the initial submission, we escalated to the city council and George Buell for help to get a resolution. After that, we resubmitted the plans, but staff now required a second professional opinion, meaning more professional fees. January two thousand and twenty, we finally received an approval to move forward, but it took another six weeks to get on the staff hearing or SHO calendar. February two thousand and twenty, we received an SHO approval with a few final items, or so we thought. But then we were moved over to a final, final review with even more requirements to fulfill. July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, we received final approval. In July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, we received the fees from the city for twenty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Our budget at the beginning was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's fifteen percent of the budget just for city fees. And we have paid tens of thousands of dollars for professionals fees. As you know, the state mandated affordable housing. On the agenda today, you are discussing housing here in Santa Barbara. How can this possibly be affordable housing? Does this timeline look like an expedited process? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Right at three minutes. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Campanella. John Campanella, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. At last week's city council meeting, staff was asked to come back for a discussion on a proposal to increase inclusionary requirements on AUD rental units from ten percent to fifteen percent. The developers of rental projects in the city can tell you the impact of this proposed increase in terms of additional below-market units as well as higher end-of-fees. They have current information on local construction costs and project financing requirements as well. As I recall, Kaiser Morrison's second report in two thousand and nineteen was prepared without talking to local developers. The report assumed that construction and cost had only increased six to eight percent since the two years from their earlier report in two thousand and seventeen. Our local developers were only given time for input during public comment. Since return or rental line cost is key feasibility, we didn't understand how local material and labor costs have actually increased over the last several years. This information could be obtained from local developers, including the Housing Authority, which recently completed two projects and is proposing to build on the Correo commuter lot. The increase in material costs and labor costs can also be obtained from our own Public Works Department. Currently, the current fifteen percent inclusionary requirement for condo projects, including AUD condos, allows extra units to satisfy the below-market requirement. So there would be no reduction in the number of market units in condo projects to provide the inclusionary. Extra units have not been allowed for rental projects in any zone, medium-high, higher priority. With the proposed increase to fifteen percent of below-market units, a project estimate be feasible that eighty-five percent of the remaining market units could bear the rent increases to subsidize the below-market units. At the same time, as construction costs go up, these same units have to cover the cost of the market units, below-market units, circulation, parking structures, all covered by market rent increases. What this means that perhaps at the same time that returns or rents are going down, expenses are going up, which hurts return on cost and the feasibility of the project. The city might consider allowing additional units for rental projects similar to what's allowed for condo projects. Could this feasibly support the increase in the inclusionary requirements? This alternative should also be discussed with local developers before staff returns with its recommendations. Thank you for requesting staff to fully engage with local developers before you consider approving the fifty percent increase in inclusionary requirements for rental projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Stephanie Petlow. Stephanie Petlow is not with us. Next speaker after that is Brandon Ristano. Brandon Ristano, please go ahead. Brandon Ristano, you can unmute yourself and go ahead, please. We'll come back to... Oh, no, here he goes. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, a little technical difficulty on my end. My apologies. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My wife and I own a few businesses downtown, including three cocktail bars. First and foremost, we wanted to extend an incredible and humongous amount of gratitude to you all and city staff as well for allowing the Parklet Initiative to move forward. It's been an incredible lifeline at what is one of our most difficult times economically. We're very appreciative. I'm jumping on the Zoom call today to ask for your support in allowing us bars and restaurants that are in Parklets to remain open beyond the current ten PM deadline. As you well know, the hospitality industry's kind of been disproportionately affected in a negative way by the pandemic, and our businesses as well as restaurants are suffering right now. We're losing money every day, but we're able to get close enough to break-even point that we'll survive, hopefully through the rest of the year, but really every minute of every day counts. And the opportunity to serve alcohol and food in the Parklets, to the extent that our ABC license dictates, is an incredible lifeline for us at this time, not just us, but other businesses downtown. We've got a staff of thirty-five folks, and we're all kind of counting on you all to help us out here as much as you can. Again, we're incredibly appreciative for everything you've done for us. And we're operating as safely as possible within the guidelines as put forth by county health. And we're operating essentially as a restaurant at all times with food service and so on and so forth. Again, thank you for everything you've done, and we really would count and hope for your support in allowing us to remain open past the ten PM curfew as it currently stands. Thanks for your time today.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Cassandra Ensberg, then Natalia Gavoni, then Crystal Barrows, then Mike J. Cassandra Ensberg?
Mike J. will be our final speaker. Thanks, Ms. Clerk.
Very good. Cassandra Ensberg, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. It's good to see you. I'm Cassandra Ensberg. I'm here representing AIA SB. I wanted to highlight the Design Charette two thousand and twenty that's coming up. There was an email that went to you this morning, but I thought it'd be good to take an opportunity at council here today to highlight it as well. Well, the Charette is called Reinvent, Repurpose, Reimagine, and Reinvigorate Downtown Santa Barbara. And we now, after all these months of planning, are launching. And we have over a hundred and fifty, I think actually a hundred and sixty architects and other design professionals giving of their talent toward this important study for housing in our downtown. And we want to invite you, council, to join us at the Design Charette kickoff Zoom meeting this coming Monday, which will be from six to eight. And this meeting will include input from some of our advisory groups, people who are helping in that regard. It will be a little breakout meetings of the teams where they will discuss their, they will have their first discussion of their areas and be looking at the areas they've been assigned. And then there will be a brief presentation from each team to the larger group to share their initial thoughts and approach. The challenges are to study the incorporation of residential downtown housing, including a multi-unit residential building on an opportunity site, adaptive reuse of an existing building, and development and enhancements of the open public spaces, the promenade, paseos, parks, and plazas. You will be getting a invite to Monday's kickoff meeting, and we hope that you can attend and be able to hear the presentations and pop into some of these breakout meetings to hear, you know, what they're discussing and see the process. And we will have more updates for you as we work along, and we're looking to be complete by mid-September. Meanwhile, I hope all of you have taken the community survey. The deadline is this Friday. And you can find that survey on aiasb.org under Charette. And other than that, I just want to say thank you. We look forward to this. We've been looking, you know, working for such a long time to get this, and we're just delighted for all the community interest. And we also look forward to the adoption of the extended expedited downtown package today. I feel like we're really moving forward in some positive directions, and thank you all. That's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Natalia Gavoni, then Crystal Barrows, then Mike J. is our final speaker. Natalia Gavoni? Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. As a Milpus business owner who is not in the liquor business, I am urging this council to pass an alcohol ordinance for the city. Many of us in this business community have been screaming for years to get this city to step up and implement such an ordinance. Allowing alcohol to flow on Milpus Street like the most notorious whitewater rapids of the world is destroying the safety of our public health and fairly targeting disadvantaged neighborhoods and depressing the economic development of our district. My days inside my boutique are spent assisting customers while also fighting off the drunks who drink, urinate, defecate, and pass out near my business. In fact, when I walk by Pat's Liquor Store, which is the one nearest to my boutique, the employees are not wearing masks and social distancing. And naturally, they are allowing their customers to do the same. Just two days ago, a seven-hundred-and-fifty-milliliter bottle of vodka was left on the driveway along with the CVS bag consisting of eight beer cans near our dumpster. CVS is just a hundred steps from my boutique location. And while I appreciate the police department putting restrictions on the CVS application for a liquor license, it is not enough. There are groups of people consisting of four to ten individuals who spend their entire day sharing their larger bottles and six and twelve packs of beer with one another and getting drunk. This current and new social behavior being demonstrated in our district is for larger groups to get drunk together. Therefore, these restrictions and conditions that the police department has outlined for CVS will not significantly impact the problems that we are facing on a daily basis. In fact, it will only aggravate them. Again, I am imploring this council to take back local control and implement an alcohol ordinance for this city. In addition, we also need a moratorium to remove the power of the police department to stop approving alcohol licenses that constitute a public convenience and necessity, especially in an area like the east side where it is already saturated with alcohol problems. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Crystal Barrows. Crystal Barrows, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and respected members of our community city council. Thank you for all your efforts that you do. I wanted to speak on two things briefly. One is to parrot some of the comments of Natasha Torodovik, Anna Gott, and Natalia Gavoni regarding that we should have an alcohol ordinance here in Santa Barbara and that our situation on the Milpus corridor is just not okay. That said, the other thing I wanted to talk to was parodying on something else, or piggybacking on something else that Dan Vilano had said, that we need to reinstate vacancy control here in our Flamingo Mobile Home Park and other mobile home parks in the city. Our Flamingo Mobile Home Park is one of the few existing resources of affordable housing in Santa Barbara. We are seniors, mostly low-income, and many are disabled. We've been asking to have this vacancy rent control restated for years now. There's been very valid reasons for the delays. We've been through the Thomas Fire and floods. We've been through changes of city council members through elections. And now there's the COVID and BLM concerns. These are all very valid reasons that these things would get put on hold. But it's something we desperately need. The rents are going up at a ridiculously exorbitant rate right now with our new ownership and management company that exists here in the Flamingo. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker?
Our final speaker is Mike J. Mike J., please go ahead.
Hello. Yes, I would like to speak on behalf of about fifteen people. I am a fifteen-year-old biker from Santa Barbara, and I ride just about every single day in the State Street area. I'd also like to comment on Mike Jordan's remarks from last meeting about the bikers riding around on the five-hundred block. Those riders, I have not seen them do that. Me and my friends all walk our bikes through the block. We have been doing so, and constantly. We are harassed for not wearing masks, even though the walkers are walking around without masks either. They seem to be targeting the bikers. Mike Jordan, I don't know if you were bullied in high school or you didn't play any sports. You must have had no friends because you're taking it out on these kids these days. Trying to enjoy a fun sport of biking in Santa Barbara. And obviously, for a lot of people, it is something to do that is much better than other activities they could be doing, such as drugs or drinking. I think promoting and suggesting violence to these kids just trying to enjoy the I think voting and suggesting violence to these kids just trying to enjoy themselves is just about the last resort and suggesting sticking a stick in the spokes of these kids trying to enjoy themselves and having fun is probably about the worst thing you could say, especially in these times. Thank you, and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. J. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you. And next on the agenda is our consent calendar. I've had one request to pull item number three. And are there any other items? Mr. Jordan, go ahead. I can't hear you. Oh, okay. Please let me know. Okay, why don't we start with the clerk reading the items that are on her list? Let's start there. Thank you. And if you would read item three, because that's one of the ones that, okay.
Very good. Item two, introduction of ordinances approving agreements with various city bargaining units and adoption of resolution amending resolution number 20048, Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2021. Recommendation that council A, ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Service Employees International Union, Local 620, for the period of April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2022. By introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the amended 2020 through 2022 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Service Employees International Union, Local 620, General Unit, and providing compensation changes for confidential employees. B, ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Service Employees International Union, Local 620, Airport and Harbor Patrol Officers and Treatment Plants Bargaining Unit for the period of April 1, 2019 through September 30th, 2021. By introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the amended 2019 through 2021 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Service Employees International Union, Local 620, Airport and Harbor Patrol Officers and Treatment Plants Bargaining Units, TAP units. C, ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Management Association for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. By introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the amended 2018 through 2020 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Management Association. D, ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association by introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the amended 2019 through 2022 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association. E, ratify the memorandum memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. By introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the side letter amending the 2018 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association. F, ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Santa Barbara City Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit through introduction and subsequent adoption of by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the 2020 through 2021 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit and providing compensation changes for confidential supervisory employees. G, introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the 2020 through 2021 salary plan applicable to Group 1 and Group 2 unrepresented managers, including the city fire division chief operations, fire chief, and police chief, except the city administrator and the city attorney. H, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the 2020 through 2021 salary plan applicable to the city administrator and the city attorney. And I adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 20048, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2021 affecting the salaries of the general and treatment and patrol bargaining units, the Police Officers Association, and unrepresented confidential employees effective August 5th, 2020. Item three, adoption of average unit size density incentive program amendments. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 30.150, to facilitate construction of more housing units within the central business district. And those are all the items to read on consent, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Nedden asked to pull item number three. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this the time when I would say my reason why for pulling, or do I?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Just just briefly, I believe that all of the amendments should be considered as a package and having these bifurcated, I don't know what I'm agreeing to in the first half versus the second half. So I will be voting no on the packages presented today.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else to that item? Or do we have public comment speakers? Ms. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, no members of the public. Oh, I apologize. John Campanella has raised his hand for this item. So you have one public speaker on the item?
Thank you.
Mr. Campanella, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of work has been put into this package, and I'm happy to see it move forward. Thank you very much. Just one clarification for the benefit of applicants. The we know the fact that the program is could expire in August 31st, 2021. There's a section in the ordinance on program duration that talks about the fact that if an application is deemed complete, it can continue to be processed under the AUD. That's original language that was in the ordinance. But since that was contained starting January 1st, 2020, a preliminary application is sufficient to provide assurance to an applicant that they can continue to process under the current zoning. The city has this form. It's required by the state. The city did an excellent job of putting it together. And it defines the rights of the applicant when submitting this preliminary application and the work that has to be done to follow up to make sure it stays in place and is effective. So I believe by not having that provision included within the termination section might be confusing as that a deemed complete application, which takes a long time to get, might be the only way that somebody could lock in working with the AUD program before it expires. But that's my only recommendation. I think that the rest of the package is wonderful and pleased to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers before we go to Mr. Jordan?
Madam Mayor and Council, we do have one additional public speaker on this item, and that is Anna Marie Gott.
May I have a question on the last public speaker?
Oh, okay. Can you call back, Mr. Campanella?
I don't know that he needs to be on. It's more that I have a question to staff related on his question. So now would be the right time, right?
Well, let's hear the public comment from Ms. Gott, and then we'll then we'll go to our discussion and questions. If that's okay, thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Anna Marie Gott, please go ahead.
Thank you for waiting while I got on the phone. Council members, I just want to remind you about the ongoing discussion that you have had regarding problems with the planning department. This had to do with processing applications and the long delays and confusion that many applicants actually had with regards to going in front of the ABR or the HLC or the Staff Hearing Officer or Planning Commission and not having their plans actually properly reviewed prior to the first time these items appeared on an agenda for a public meeting. To give you an example, sidewalks were missing from plans. City staff should have caught those those problems prior to actually having a project scheduled for review at ABR or HLC. However, one thing that would have prevented these projects from actually being reviewed and staff missing real problems like problems with the setback, problems with height, problems with the lack of parking, problems with the lack of a sidewalk, would have been an actual written review, which is required prior to Planning Commission, but not before it is actually reviewed by any member of the HLC, ABR, or Staff Hearing Officer. This causes a lot of confusion. It also then bakes in fundamental flaws with projects well before they are ever reviewed at the Planning Commission. I would really urge you to not adopt the current package. As we already know, that it is not sufficient, and there are substantial problems with it. One of them actually being a review that is written and a report that should be provided the first time a project is reviewed. If this is not done at the first review, we will continue to see projects that are too tall, projects that do not have sufficient parking, projects that that have the wrong setbacks and are not requesting a waiver or a modification, and projects that are completely and entirely missing, in some cases, any public improvements such as a sidewalk, which is required not just by the city but for ADA access as well as pedestrian master plan. So I would really urge you not to adopt this, to actually hold off, and to really look at this one item, which is actually key. Staff is supposed to be following our ordinances, and they are not doing that when they place projects that are unvetted and without comments prior to an ABR or HLC meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other speakers, we'll go to Michael Jordan. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask City Attorney Tavas Ostringer a question regarding the I would comment about four minutes ago.
There she is. Thank you, Ms. Ostringer.
So I had forwarded quite the same question that Mr. Campanella gave, and I there's a little difference in his writing versus his talking, and I just would like to hear your thoughts. I know there's been years of consternation at the Planning Commission on the use of the word complete or deemed complete, the phrase deemed complete, and now further exasperated by where the state gets involved in timelines and stuff like that. So could you just, if you can remember much of what he said, could you just tell me there's nothing to worry about with his concerns?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Jordan, there's nothing for you to worry about with regards to his concerns.
Perfect.
Would you like me to explain, or is that good enough?
I'd love I'd love to know the little longer answer for the future, too, but thank you.
Sure. Mayor Mario and Councilmember Jordan. What Mr. Campanello is referring to is the prelim from this new Senate Bill 330 that came out, preliminary applications. Developer can now submit an application. It's a little bit more limited than what we would see to have an application approved under the Permit Streamlining Act. Once the city deems that preliminary application complete, the laws that exist at that time will apply to that project as it goes forward. I didn't put in a specific reference to a preliminary application deemed complete in the ordinance because those can actually expire within 180 days. And so if we had made it deemed complete on the preliminary application and the application actually expired within the 180 days or the project changed in size, I wanted to make sure that those projects would not be deemed complete per our AUD ordinance. So it was actually intentional.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, well, Mr. Oh, okay. Ms. Gutierrez, you have a question on the that item? I can't hear you.
Item number two on the consent calendar.
Okay, let's go to item two then, and we'll we'll have to vote on item three separately. So go ahead. What's your question on item two?
Just for the so the public can understand, is there I don't know who to ask this question, but can somebody explain section G and H, please? On consent calendar number two?
Um, yes, would that be Ms. Antle to explain that? Or there you go. Thanks, Ms. Antle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Alejandro Gutierrez. Are you referring to the section related to the city administrator and city attorney?
Yes, but I also want a little bit more explanation just for the the public to understand. Because when you when you read them, it's just a little like really general. So if you can go through section G and then section H.
Okay. The city administrator will be taking a 5% compensation reduction totaling $14,400 and some odd dollars. That will be in the form of increased CalPERS pickup costs, a declining of a 2% raise back to February of 2020, as well as the stoppage of his 457 deferred compensation that was granted by the council last year. That totals the $14,400 and some odd dollars. For the city attorney, he will be working with a council subcommittee to determine what that reduction will be.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Ms. Pam and in the background there, Sam. Thank you so much for working in this very delicate issue, especially right now with how the economy is. We're all suffering right now, and I just also want to thank all of the union members for being so patient. This is very frustrating and long meetings and just getting this to the table. Just want to thank staff. So thank you so much and for everybody that participated and for the transparency. Thank you for explaining that to the public as well.
Thank you. So let's take item number three. Thanks, Ms. Antle and Mr. Ramirez. We're grateful for your help today. Mr. Jordan, why don't you come back since you had the floor kind of recently? And I think you were a big advocate for item number three going forward. Would you move item three?
Do you stand a motion? I'll move consent calendar, item three.
I'll second.
Is that a second from Friedman? Is there any other discussion? And we need a roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk. Thank you.
Very good. This is a vote for item three on the calendar. Motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Sneddon?
No.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mayor Mario?
Aye. Okay, that's a six to one vote. Thank you so much. Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar, please? We'll wait for the reading.
I'll move it.
Okay, that looked like a.
I'm sorry if you were reading my lips. I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
And a second from Ms. Harmon. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote for that. Ms. Clerk, thank you.
This is a motion for the remainder of the consent other than item three. A motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Harmon. Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Mario?
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you so much. That concludes our consent calendar. We'll move to our first administrative item. Ms. Clerk, would you read that title into the record, please? You're muted? You're muted.
All right. Sorry about that. Item six, introduction of ordinance for the execution of a grant funding agreement related to the desalination plant. Recommendation of the council, A, introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the city administrator to execute a grant funding agreement with the State of California Department of Water Resources in the amount of $10 million for the reactivation of the Charles E. Meyer Desalination Plant Project, and B, direct staff to establish a dual purpose designated reserve for the Charles E. Meyer Desalination, Desalination Plant as described in this report, to fund capital maintenance and modifications of the desalination plant facilities and to mitigate the potential repayment risk associated with acceptance of the $10 million grant.
Thanks. Mr. Hagmark, Mr. Hamilton, take it away.
All right. Mayor Mario, Councilmembers Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager. Before you today, looking for your approval of a $10 million grant from the Department of Water Resources. Typical acceptance of grants, particularly of this magnitude is an exciting time. However, there have been some questions that are raised and I'm hoping we can answer those questions for you today. Although some of the terms are not ideal, I think they're typical of most grants. And I strongly believe that this grant makes, makes sense for the city. I will say this grant comes at a good time for our water customers and the water fund as we are facing significant financial challenges as a result of the pandemic. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Hamilton, our water fund analyst, to walk you through the details of this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagmark. We can go to the next slide, please. So I'll jump right in. The inception of the grant opportunity that we're bringing forward today to council goes all the way back just about six years to 2014 with the passage of Proposition 1. And Proposition 1 put into place the Water Quality, Supply and Infrastructure Improvement Act. Ultimately, it authorized issuance of bonds, which would support state water supply infrastructure. And under that bond issuance, about $100 million was allocated to the Department of Water Resources to support seawater desalination projects. So it's under this water desalination grant program that the city submitted an application for which we're bringing it forward today. I'd like to note, almost from the passage date on November 4, 2014, staff has been, from the city, been in contact with the state, explaining the project and the benefits to the city of the reactivation of the desalination plant. Next slide, please. So what we see, going back to the grant award process, and I think this slide here will turn in just a minute, is in 2014, we saw great support for continued investment in water supply. So 62% of Santa Barbara County voters approved of Proposition 1. In the midst of the worst drought on record in 2015, city council voted to reactivate the desalination plant. And again, in 2017, we got tremendous support from State Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, who ultimately was able to help the city overcome several eligibility criteria issues that were preventing the application from going forward. Through all of that, we, in March 2018, the city was awarded a $10 million grant. We can go to the next slide. Since, since that time of awarded, the, the DWR took about a year to get the grant agreement out. And when it did come out in 2019, there were some general provisions in, in the funding agreement. So of course, we're talking about term. It's a, it's a five-year agreement with some extending provisions, and we'll talk about those in depth. It also wanted the city to ensure that all of its permitting environmentally or otherwise was in compliance with all regulatory bodies. And it discussed the form and content of dispersment requests. There are some reporting requirements with the grant. So we have to report for five years if it's accepted annually on the performance and any operation, operational issues or maintenance on the plant if it were accepted. And, and also facility ownership. So the city agrees to retain ownership of the desalination plant or get express approval from the DWR if we wanted to transfer ownership in the future. Now, these last two bullet points is where each staff spent the large majority of our time in negotiations relative to operating and maintenance terms in the funding agreement and ultimately dispute resolution. Or what would happen if the city were to find itself in breach of the funding agreement? How would we go about resolving that type of situation? We can go to the next slide. I, I do want to note that the, the funding terms are not inconsistent with really all other grants. So typically, you're getting funding for a project and the funding body wants to see that project continue to provide benefit to the agency that received the funding. And so this is no different. The state has a desire to see this project continue to operate, to provide benefits to the city of Santa Barbara. Now, as I discussed, the, the operating and maintenance provisions were the sticking point in negotiations. So when the city originally submitted a grant application, we, we put forward a potential operating scenario that extended into the long term. And the, the purpose was it allowed us to develop a calculation for the present value of desalinated water. And the, and the state wanted to see this long-term pricing option. Now, from staff's perspective, when we put this option forward, we viewed it as one of many operating scenarios that could occur into the future. Of course, without a crystal ball, we, we weren't entirely sure what's going to take place going out 40 years. From the state's perspective, they viewed this as a firm commitment on how we would operate the plant. And so when we received the funding agreement draft from the state, it included a term that we would operate the plant for 36 out of the next 40 years. If the city were not to be in compliance with the grant agreement, then we would potentially be in breach of contract. And ultimately, if the state chose to pursue it, would be able to require the city to repay all of the grant funding received to date and plus interest at the time of breach. Now, in, in the state negotiations, Mr. Hagmark and I spent a good amount of time with the state on when would the city be excused from performance under the funding agreement? Or in what cases would there be a force majeure event? One thing we were able to agree on is state and federal legislation that changes the operating environment for the plant would certainly be outside of the control of the city and potentially excuse the city from certain performance terms under the funding agreement. And, and secondly, and although we didn't get resolution on these, we had extensive discussions with state staff on potential dispute areas. So there are indirect actions such as state or federal legislation on potable reuse or state and federal legislation on climate change and energy initiatives. And while not necessarily directly affecting the desalination plant, those, those actions may also change the operating environment for the plant. And so while the black and white agreement doesn't address those, we think we had some really beneficial and extensive conversations on those issues. Finally, what, what would happen in a dispute resolution? The funding agreement right now requires that the state and the city would have to come together and enter into consultation and attempt to resolve the dispute and negotiate acceptable terms to both parties. Next slide, please. We took this item to Water Commission on May 21 of this year, and Water Commission did vote 3-1 in support of moving forward with the execution of the grant, grant funding agreement. I, I did want to highlight the, the comments from the dissenting vote on May 21, which, which are also shared by other comments that staff has received from members of the public. The first being, the Water Commissioner viewed the recommendation to execute the grant as a decision on the long-term operation of the plant. So essentially, it would be deciding to make desalination as part of the city's base supply, which the commissioner didn't believe had, was a major policy decision and had not been fully vetted in that process. And we'll address that in the next slide. And secondly, they were concerned about an open-ended repayment risk. So we are taking on a potential future liability if we don't, if we accept the grant and don't operate the plant as we agreed to. And we may potentially be burdening our future selves with a liability and no plan for repayment. So I'd like to talk about those, each of those. We can go to the next slide, please. The, the role of desalination as a source of supply for the city, as well as all of the supplies in the city's water portfolio, are currently being evaluated in the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan. That's formerly what is known as the Long-Term Water Supply Plan. So this planning effort is underway and has an extensive stakeholder process to it. It's scheduled to be completed in July of next year. Ideally, the decision that's before you today would come after the recommendations from the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan are brought forward. At that time, you would understand exactly what the recommendations are for operating the desalination plant, how often and how will act as a supply. But we, we'll touch on that more later, but we think there's an opportunity for the city still maintain control of the $10 million grant. And, and potentially after the decision on the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan, then decide on how to move forward with the grant funding. Next slide, please. Secondly, there was, there were some financial planning issues with the desalination plant in general. So the complexity, the harsh working environment with seawater and the financing arrangement for the desalination plant make it somewhat of a unique asset for the water utility. And independent of this grant issue, we've been brainstorming on options to prepare for the capital maintenance of the facility. And this capital maintenance may be somewhat costly. And so we've been looking at several different options such as pay-as-you-go funding, financing, state revolving fund financing, or bonding, potentially a sinking fund, although that's more appropriate for a very specific project, not a kind of indefinite revolving fund, which is what we came to. And I'll explain in more detail on the next slide. And the other, the other financial planning issue is the one brought up by the commissioner, which is by executing the grant funding agreement, the city takes on this grant repayment risk. Next slide, please. So to address both of these financial planning issues, staff is recommending that we implement a reserve that serves primarily two functions. So it's a dual-purpose reserve. Number one, it acts as a revolving fund for capital expenditures. And number two, it mitigates a portion of the grant repayment risk. We've set it up such that the target reserve amount would be 7.5 billion. So that is the city's portion of the grant, net of Montecito's portion of the grant under the recently approved water supply agreement. And ultimately, the funding source would come from a water supply development fee assessed from Montecito Water District. We'd be able to contribute to the reserve at, at council's discretion with other sources of revenue.
I just wanted to expand a little bit on that. So to give the council and the public a little better understanding of that. So in years, for example, that we choose not to operate the desalination plant, there's roughly a savings, an operating savings of about $2 million. And so under this, this plan, we would be taking that operational savings and putting it into this reserve account. So it could be used if, if it looks like we're not going to be using the plant. It could be used to repay the grant. And as you can see with a $2 million year savings, it quickly dwarfs the value of the grant. If that's, if that's what we find. On the other hand, if we find that climate change, water scarcity, we're finding that we're operating this plant more, more often, we'll be taking any year-to-year savings and of course, some savings from the, the water supply agreement with Montecito and putting that into this reserve account and using it to help offset capital cost as we go along. So it kind of has that, that dual-purpose effort in supporting either scenario, whether we're operating the plant or it's in a standby state.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hagmark. Next slide, please. So just finally, I'd like to go over some of the considerations before council today. We want to be transparent about the execution of the grant introducing a potential future repayment risk for the water utility. However, we think the introduction of the dual-purpose reserve would largely mitigate this risk. The, the agreement is, it provides for consultation between the parties to address these disputes. So it's not silent on that. And there's a, a formal proceeding on coming together with the state to find a solution that's amenable to both the state and city, and then ultimately enacting that amendment to the funding agreement. As I mentioned previously, there is a, there's somewhat of a timing issue with the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan in the grant. However, if the city were not to go forward today with the execution of the grant, the state would pull the money back from the award and put it back out for competitive bidding or competitive applications. And we, we don't see that it's likely that the city would be competitive in a second application attempt. So if the city council were to move forward today, they would retain control of the $10 million grant. And if at a later date, we decided to make an expeditious repayment, that would also still be within control of city council. And finally, the grant funding would come at a very critical time for the water fund. So like, like many funds in the city, we're seeing revenue drops largely from the commercial sector in our rate revenues. And we have cut approximately $4 million in capital project funding for FY21. Not accepting the grant is really somewhat of a one-for-one. If, if we did not accept $10 million, we would have to do $10 million less in capital or operational cuts. And so for the water fund, right now, it would be huge in maintaining our capital maintenance goals. And last slide, please. So the recommendation before council today is A, to authorize the city administrator to execute a grant funding agreement with the state, and B, direct staff to establish a dual-purpose reserve as described in the report and presentation. Thank you.
Looks like Mr. Friedman's ready with the question. This is questions for staff at this time, please. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Hamilton for the presentation. My question is focusing on, you covered this, but I just want to make sure I have the right understanding in the public as well. Is the concerns that were expressed by the dissenting Water Commissioner and other members of the public that by accepting this and the terms of the 36 out of 40 years operation, that we would be essentially making a policy decision now when we're going into the Enhanced Urban Water Management study? So my, my question is that when we go into that study and say we were to say that the D cell plan is going to continue to act as a drought buffer, would we have the ability at that point to repay the loan? Or if we decide that at that point that we're using it more as a core water supply to keep the loan? So is there a way to accept this loan, but make it predicated on the, the results of how we're going to determine what the role of D cell will be of the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan? Does that make sense how I'm phrasing that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. I, I think we ultimately retain the, the ultimate flexibility by accepting this loan or this grant, I'm sorry, by accepting this grant. Because we will continue through this, our planning process that we're going through. We've got planned engagements. Another, we've already met twice with the Water Commission. We have at least two more coming up. And then we've got two meetings with the city council. We've got a public meeting. We've got several iterations of this planning process that we're going through. And at the end of that, if we decide, let's just take worst-case scenario as, as it reflects on this grant, we decide that D cell is going to be, remain just a drought supply, we would then be in a position to have time to repay that. And as I mentioned before, we would probably time that repayment if that's, if that's where we, we go with it with the, obviously, the climate. Like, are we in a position to take D cell offline or are we continuing to see dry conditions? That's one o, o, option we're going to give. But each year that we don't operate, we, we accrue $2 million to this account to pay it back. And when we do that, we do not have to turn to our rate payers and ask for additional money because that's already baked into our current rate structure, the operating costs of D cell. So that money was to be taken off with no significant spikes in, in water rates. So I think it provides us the ultimate flexibility by accepting this grant. And I think we get this money when we need it, which is now. And we have the opportunity over time, if we choose to operate this plant differently, that climate turns on us and provides us plentiful water. We're in a different situation. We have the opportunity to repay this in that scenario as well.
Thank you. Because I think that was the important point is we're not making a policy decision here today. We still have that flexibility. So thank you for the thorough answer.
Okay, Jordan, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think just two questions, and I think for Mr. Hagmark, although I would do want to compliment Mr. Hamilton on embracing the COVID look. Been a while since I've seen you. You look very good. So Mr. Hagmark, so part of the consideration here is dropping revenues or higher costs, whatever. And so you would hold on to this grant money until mid 2021 and carry yourself with reserves until then? Or would it always just be, we'll take the money now, we'll just shuffle it this way and we'll use it, but we'll have reserves ready to replace it?
Right, so Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, the the idea here would be that we would take this money. We we have plans for this money now to maintain operations and capital infrastructure replacement. But if we decide that it's just a drought supply, that we would start to any year that we didn't operate the D cell plant, we would be taking that net savings and putting into this account with the idea that we would repay the the grant in the future.
Okay, so you're kind of starting at zero with that right now. And you'd accrue at least a couple hundred thousand dollars in the next year, then make a decision mid next year on what the what the definition of D cell is going to look like for the future. And then you'd you just have to replace what you've used up till that time, right?
That's correct.
And then my other question was on that on that account. So you're terming that reserve as both a a capital account and a holding spot to regenerate up to $10 million for pot for potential repayment. And if you're not operating, you're not making that 2 million a year in that account. And you're only making that couple hundred thousand dollars of some source from Montecito. However, those two play out for however many years. What's the assurance that you'll have enough money in there at the time you'll need it to potentially pay the grant money back if you're also using it to cover budget shortfalls for capital needs?
And I think that's a great topic that we would discuss. Once we decide what we're doing with D cell, we can revisit that. But I I do think, for example, this year, we did a one-time sale of water to Lacumbra Mutual Water Company. That was roughly a million dollar sale. So that's going to go into this this savings account. But I think it's a good point, and I really think it's it's going to be predicated. That decision is really predicated on how D cell we decide D cell ultimately is going to be part of our supply. If we decide it's going to be on and always on, then I think it kind of makes it clear that that money can be, all of it can be used for capital. If we decide that it's going to be only as a drought supply, then I think we are predicated on, we need to build up that seven and a half to $10 million reserves so that we're able to repay the grant if that if it comes to that.
Okay, so it's your time to tell me the devil, the devil in the details is really about a year away when we get to the next year. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions on sort of different tracks. So maybe I'll start on the financing piece first. I'm just trying to understand. I appreciate the creative approach you guys have have taken to making this work. But when I think about repaying this grant, you know, five years from now, my first thought is, wow, we that's probably a lot of interest that would be accrued. So are are we anticipating, can you talk, can you speak to that? Are we anticipating having to pay a lot of interest to repay it back? And I guess I'm also wondering, wouldn't we know at the conclusion of the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan discussion whether or not we are going to need to pay it back? I I'm confused about why this talk, whether we would maybe pay it back five, six, seven years. And also, I would be interested in knowing what the cost implication of that is. Because presumably, five, six, seven years from now, when we look at how much interest we'll be paying, that will be a a driver of whether we make the decision to pay it back. And I'm, I just want to know what we're getting into, I guess.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Harmon, I'll take a stab at the first part and I'll let Mr. Hamilton. But I think what's important to to recognize this is we don't know. I mean, we're going to come up with a water supply plan that's going to lay out how D cell is supposed to play. But we also don't know when it's going to rain. So it may be that we end up having to operate it because there we're we're seeing less and less rainfall. So that that is a factor. So but as we accrue this money, for example, we start accruing the 2 million roughly a year in operating costs. It goes into this account. And 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 as Mr. Hamilton can speak to this, the the interest rate, I believe, is the kind of the life rate. So it's the rate that the city gets on its investments as well. So it's kind of a universal interest rate. So as the that interest accrues in that account, it 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 would kind of be the same interest rate that we would would probably see with the state. And Mr. Hamilton can probably add.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, that that's correct. The we would share in about a similar interest rate. It's the general obligation bond rate for the state. And it is it is a tad bit higher at times, 2% to 3% for state issuances. The Montecito would also participate in this under the water supply agreement. So you get the benefits of the grant, but you also have the obligations of repayment if that comes to be. And it's, although it's not in the grant in agreement, I don't want to give a false hope here. But from speaking with state staff right now, it's not unreasonable to to see it, see see an opportunity where we have a prorated repayment. So you don't repay all, but you repay if you operate for 15 years, you repay whatever the percent difference is on the grant. And when you look at those finances, there's a lot of ways where essentially that transacts like a loan to the state, but with zero interest. So you repay a portion later on, but because it's prorated, it's actually about the 10 million that it started with when you include interest. I I that's a little complicated, but I'm happy to explain.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. That is very helpful. And and then the second question, I guess, is more a water policy question. I have to admit, many of my colleagues are far more expert in the area of water policy than I am. So I feel like I'm trying to play catch up a little bit. And I I hope you all will bear with me when I ask some of these maybe very elementary questions. But a lot of the conversation has been about whether D cell will be part of our base water supply and how that will work. My understanding of D cell was that it was always connected to drought conditions and it was part of our drought buffer that we have. So if D cell becomes part of our base water, what what buffer do we have? Is it just like increased water restrictions? I I guess I'm confused about what D cell is and the role it will play and what will happen to our drought buffer if it becomes our base water supply.
Councilwoman Harmon, that's a great question. I get that question a lot. Because we do have such a diverse supply and most California cities have one or two supplies. And we've probably got seven, I think, different supplies that we get to pull from. And so so with that, and that's why I don't predicting where we're going to go with this. But there are options now now that the city has made this investment in D cell. We've made this capital adventure. We start talking about the avoided costs of D cell. And that is really the operating cost. So there's the barriers to operating it are much different than they were six years ago when we didn't, we we had to make that capital investment. So now that we've made this investment, the the question that gets to be, how do how do you, how do you, how do you start to fill the city's gaps? We have so many threats to our other supplies. I can't, I can't really talk about D cell without talking about the threats to a lot of our surface water supplies, state reductions in state water. So all those things are diminishing. And so at some point, we ask ourselves, maybe this is part of our core supply. And what we're talking about when we talk about our drought buffer is the next increment of of upgrades to the plant. So as you may recall, this facility is permitted for up to 10,000 acre feet a year. The community uses right now about 10,000 acre feet a year. I'm not advocating that we're going to get 100% from D cell. But we currently reactivated it and it's doing 3,000. But we have sized many of these components so that we can incrementally upgrade the facility within its permitted capacity. So we we may at the end of this part of this planning process decide that our drought buffer is actually the next increment of upgrades to the facility. So from say, 3,000 to 5,000 acre feet a year may be our our a buffer, our drought buffer. So that's just one way of looking at it. Plus, you know, we're kicking around and it's part of the the discussion is where does potable reuse fit into this? You know, we certainly don't have regulations that would support it for our community, but I know the state's working on it. And in 10, 15 years, that may be, that may be our drought buffer. When we need more capacity, that so lots of options that I think we're we're going to be developing. And and ultimately, coming back to you guys to weigh in on those those options as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it seems like a, I agree. Seems like a big policy decision to have our drought buffer just be the next bigger D cell option, or at least something we need to discuss. And I, my final question, I think it's also for you, Mr. Hagmark, if that's okay. One of the communications we received from, I'm sorry, I don't remember who in this moment noted that there are environmental impacts to running the D cell plant. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to that and to our efforts to mitigate those environmental impacts and whether that's something we're thinking about when we're thinking about this discussion of increasing our D cell capacity or making it base and 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 growing it. Can you just speak to that, please?
Yeah, I can. So when our plant was originally constructed in the 90s, it was actually 7,500 acre feet a year. So the facility itself was much larger because Montecito and and Goleta were partners in that original facility. So we have, we did the environmental review back then and we did an amendment to it now based on its permitted capacity, but we're currently only using about 30% of its current capacity. As such, when we went through that amendment and when we were working with the regional board, which is the state who oversees our permit, we actually did some mitigation as part of that. And we also made some significant changes to the facility to make it less harmful to the environment. We made much smaller screens on it. We reduced the velocity of the water going into it. So there wouldn't be any significant entrapment or entrapment of marine life in it. And and you have to keep in mind where this thing is located is really ideal. It used to be an old city sewer outfall, but it's oak located in kind of the sandy desert floor. There isn't a lot of life around it. So it actually makes for kind of an ideal intake location. So there was a lot that went into it. And, you know, to further go with whether council's headed to, we're also hoping in the next few years that we're going to be powering this facility with 100% renewables. And and I think that, to me, is probably the biggest environmental impact is the energy usage. But I hope in the next few years, we're going to be saying that has been resolved as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? I don't have any questions. So let's go to our public comment, please. Ms. Clerk, I'm assuming there's people there?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we do have a few persons who have indicated they wish to speak on this item. And that's Lee Heller and Kira Redmond. So first up is Lee Heller.
Thanks for waiting, Ms. Heller. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Council, I hope this time we've got the technology working. Somebody smiled, so Kathy smiled, so I know I got it right. Thank you. I wanted to respond on this issue because I am a water customer in both the Montecito Water District and the Santa Barbara District as a property owner. And I am concerned about overreliance on D cell. I I totally get why this 10 million is compelling, particularly at this historical moment. But I am concerned about a flat commitment to taking the money and by definition, then committing to having D cell be part of the base. And it shouldn't be because Montecito needs water, because the Montecito Water District has been stunningly incapable of restricting usage based on responsible water usage. I say this as someone who lives in Summerland and is so frustrated by the way that water is squandered in Montecito. So I would really encourage an approach that does involve being able to pay this money back at a low interest rate, rather than just committing to taking it outright and then being stuck fundamentally committing to having D cell be part of the city's water base. So thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Kira Redmond. Kira Redmond, please go ahead. Our next speaker is Kira Redmond. Kira Redmond, go ahead. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Kira Redmond with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Channel Keeper is extremely concerned by the city's proposed acceptance of this grant with its binding obligation to operate the desalination plant at full capacity for 36 out of the next 40 years. As I explained in the letter I emailed to you on May 29, the city's current long-term water supply plan is the primary policy document guiding the management of the city's water supply. And it only allows for the use of the D cell plant to provide water supply during a drought emergency. Moreover, agreeing to this long-term obligation directly contradicts commitments the city council has made publicly to its rate players numerous times over the past six years about the long-term role of D cell in the city's water supply portfolio. When city council decided to reactivate the facility five years ago, you repeatedly assured the public and regulatory agencies that it was a temporary emergency measure to meet a shortfall in supply caused by the drought. Now, through a backdoor decision to accept a $20 million grant, you are obligating the city and its rate players to a drastically different scenario for the next four decades that will have major implications for the city's future water supply portfolio, for rate payers, for the marine environment, and for the city's energy usage, greenhouse gas emissions, and contribution to climate change. It also contradicts the city's publicly stated intent to base decisions on what its future water supply portfolio will look like on the outcome of the recently initiated stakeholder process, Water Vision Santa Barbara, in which I was asked and agreed to participate, and the associated process of updating your Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan. The city's agreement to be bound to operate the desalination plant at full capacity for 36 out of the next 40 years before that process has even gotten underway preempts the outcome and seems disingenuous as it best. I can just now hear staff's justification for their expected proposal to shift the role of D cell from a drought buffer to a baseload supply through that process. We're bound by the grant agreement with DWR to do so. This is completely backwards and is not how public policy on an issue with major economic, environmental, and social justice implications ought to be made with zero public vetting and input. As a side note, I submitted a public records request to the city to obtain documentation of the exchanges between city staff and DWR with regard to this term of the grant agreement more than two months ago and has still not received any documents. As a grant recipient ourselves, Channel Keeper would never accept a grant, knowing that there's a good possibility we couldn't meet our obligations, no matter how much we need the money. It'd be dishonest and lacks integrity. In sum, Channel Keeper strongly urges you to reject or delay acceptance of this grant until you've completed the public process of reviewing and updating your water supply plan, including through a full environmental impact report as clearly required by CECL. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mark Alvarado. Mark Alvarado, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor. So this is really interesting because it's when Representative Friedman said loan, it's kind of like sparked in my mind. Okay, is this a grant or this a loan or is this both? It kind of seems like it's both, just depending on what the outcome is of this endeavor. So my main point really is that I think we spent close to over $100 million to get the D cell plant up and running. That was a hefty investment that the public made. And I'm, I can't recall of what the promises were of full capacity. And I think I think we said now that it's running at 30%. And so I guess my concern is, is that, you know, when it was dormant, you know, it got to the point that where, you know, parts and just the mechanics and we just had to pretty much reinvent the wheel in order to get it up and running again. And so I just don't know what the safeguards are within a dormant state, a 30% state. Obviously, you know, if you're running full bore, you know, there's always going to be maintenance issues. So I I'm just, my point is just that we made a hefty investment with this D cell plant truly as a safeguard for, you know, an extreme drought situation. But I think there's a lot of people in the community that are just kind of really wondering, you know, what really benefit are we going to get from that hefty investment that we made? Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Any other speakers?
Madam Mayor, no further speakers on this topic.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item number six. And we'll go to our comment and decision-making thinking, Ms. Snidham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think just for comments first, I I just, on the face of it, it it would seem like a difficult decision. And I have spent a great deal of time in conversations, both in Water Commission, with Mr. Hagmark, with Ms. Redmond, with members of the Water Commission and Environmental Community. And it's most important to me that this is not that this is not presupposing the outcome of the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan that is a robust civic engagement process. We really need to not presuppose what the outcomes of those are. It's, it's also really important that we honor our promises that the D cell usage is for a drought buffer and to not, through accepting of this grant, or not to change that trajectory unless we have other information. The way that this is laid out, I believe, leaves the options still open for an open-ended and, and still rigorous civic engagement process with the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan and gives us the opportunity to pay it back if, if it turns out that we don't need to use D cell, which honestly would be my hope. I would hope that we would have over five years of so much water that we didn't know what to do with it and to be in a position where, where D cell, we're not relying on it as our drought buffer. As it stands now, our groundwater basins are not fully recharged. It would look like Kachuma's full enough and we could just turn off D cell. But I think we all appreciate it's much more complicated than that in terms of our water budget. If it, if it turns out that in five years or there's a, you know, five-year period of time where we're not using D cell fully and we're saving that $2 million a year, it would be great to give that grant money back because we would be in such a position that we weren't needing D cell. I don't imagine that with climate change and the trajectories that are predicted, that we're going to have a five-year block of time where that's the case. I think many predictions and models show prolonged drought, more extreme drought. And again, not wanting to presuppose that outcome, I just think it's highly likely that we'll be so grateful again that D cell is there. Many of us remember the first time the D cell plant was built. And then, you know, it seemed like we weren't going to need it, and it was mothballed and then resurrected. And the amount of money that it took to do that. And what I don't want to see is us not having that long-term view of recognizing the need of D cell. With that caveat, I think with the recommendations that we hold that grant money in reserve for that time so that if we do need to pay it back, we're able to. And I think it's important to, to acknowledge that we would go into reconsultation, we would go into negotiation to discuss why our water needs changed and how they changed. I want to acknowledge also the work of Senator Hannah Beth Jackson on our behalf on, on this grant and that the application of this grant started a long time ago. And the timing of it is such that it comes up right now. But the assumptions when we made the grant application are still valid today, that D cell would be a drought buffer. And I'm really counting on that accepting this grant and holding those funds in reserve to be able to pay them back satisfies that we're not making a policy decision to have D cell be baseline, that we're not skipping ahead of the urban water management, Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan. So for, for that reason, I'll support the recommendations and leave it to discussion with my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'll keep my comments really brief. I just want to express my support for the perspective that Councilmember Sneddon put out. You know, I, I too, and again, with the caveat that, that this is relatively new for me. So I'm, I'm trying to work through the substance of it as I, as, along with probably many people who are watching. But I, I am concerned that our acceptance of this grant appears to be a policy commitment to the expansion of D cell without robust public engagement. So that's what my concern is. I want to make sure that, and I think staff has heard us and, and did a good job to try to mitigate that concern. You know, I, I like the reserve concept. I think it's very creative and is reflective of that concern. I really want to trust that concept. But again, I share Mayor Protem Sneddon's concern that we may be predetermining our future, or I guess rather that we really shouldn't predetermine our future when it comes to water policy. So I support the solution. I think it was creative and appreciate the work of Mr. Hagmark in putting it together. I just want to say I do still feel, I, I still have some concerns. I just want to make sure we're not being penny wise and pound foolish, you know? I mean, I, I think it is very attractive in this moment to take $10 million. But I, I want us as a community to be very thoughtful about what it means when we do accept that money because I know water policy is so central to who we are here. And that I, I just want to make sure we maintain our focus on robust public engagement before we commit ourselves to anything that is a substantive and important change long-term. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank Mark Alvarado for correcting me. I meant to say grant all those times, not loan. Just one of those, one of those days, I guess. In terms of this grant, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues and appreciate all that staff has done to address the issues that were raised in regards to the 36 out of 40 years. I think you've come up with an eloquent solution to that, that still allows us to go forward with the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan process where we can look at all the data, have a robust community discussion on what we want our water supply portfolio to be in the future. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation as it relates to this, plus in particular the reserve that allows us to continue to have those discussions. Thank you.
Will you go ahead and make a motion since you have the floor?
So I will move the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Second?
And a second from Ms. Sneddon. Thank you. I will be supporting the motion as it's proposed. I think it's an elegant solution to the question of if we need to pay back the grant. It gives us that flexibility. I think people too are forgetting the drought. Maybe the pandemic has had our minds on other things. Everything was so dry and the threat of a severe drought returning is real. We'll be talking about climate change later. These are real threats to us. And so I'm grateful for this water supply. It's an independent water supply, even if it's imperfect. And I appreciate what Mr. Hagmark had to say about using as much renewable energy as we can to power it, to, to provide water to our residents. So if there's no other comment, I'll ask for a vote, a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, this is for item six. Motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Mayor Protem Sneddon for the staff recommendation. Mayor Protem Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
We didn't hear, was that a yes?
Yes.
Somebody read her lips. Okay.
Yes, yes.
That's a yes for Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. And Mayor Mario?
I, okay, that's unanimous. And we thank the public speakers for giving us their thoughtful perspective. We appreciate where you're coming from. We appreciate our Water Commission for voting on this too and giving us a recommendation. Thank you to Water Staff. We'll close this item. And it is close enough to four o'clock for us to take a short break. This meeting
Staff is ready to resume our meeting.
I believe so, Madam Mayor.
We're reconvening this August 4th, 2020, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. We're on item number seven. If you would read that into the record, Ms. Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, item seven, Commercial Fishing Subcommittee Update.
This is from our Waterfront Department. And we're ready for staff presentation. Mr. Wiltshire, nice to see you.
After you, Madam Mayor and Council, good to see you all as well. I'm Mike Wiltshire, the City of Santa Barbara Waterfront Director. So today I'll be giving a brief presentation centered around the local commercial fishing industry. The main focus will be around the industry's need for increased shoreside space for gear storage and boat storage, cold product storage, and fish processing. More specifically, I'll provide a bit of history and review on the efforts over the last 12 to 18 months by the Harbor Commission, Commercial Fishing Subcommittee, the Waterfront Department, and the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara. In addition to my presentation, I have with me on the line Ms. Kim Selko, who's the Executive Director of the local nonprofit group Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara. And this group often goes by their acronym CFSP. Once I'm complete with my presentation, Ms. Selko will give a brief presentation going a little more in depth on the specifics of the commercial fishing industry. So feel free to stop me anytime with questions, but it may be most effective if we wait until both myself and Ms. Selko have presented, as between the two of us, we're going to cover a lot. I mean, they will answer some of your questions.
Okay. We'll hold our questions. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Ultimately, staff will be seeking some direction from council, most specifically on the level of city involvement going forward, the efforts to identify resources and funding for the commercial fishing industry. So with no questions, I'll move ahead with my presentation. So next slide, please. Here's a brief outline of what I'll be presenting on today. So I'd like to cover some some basic history on the Tidlands Grant and local coastal plan. I'll cover current and historical levels of support provided by the waterfront to the commercial fishing industry. And I'll talk a little bit about the formation and efforts of the Harbor Commission Commercial Fishing Subcommittee. And I'll go over some of the existing shoreside commercial fishing facilities. And then I'll discuss our efforts to date determining and evaluating site needs and finally wrap up with a bit of discussion on the next steps and moving forward. Next slide, please. So I'd like to give a really brief and by no means complete overview of the Tidlands Grant and how it really established the governance of the waterfront. So in short, all of the waterfront lands were granted to the City of Santa Barbara in 1925 by the state. And so in current day, this land equates to roughly all the land south of Carrillo Boulevard, bound by the city limits on the east and west. So this is typically what we refer to as the waterfront. As you can see in this pretty neat historical photo from 1934, it was it was very different back then. So some things are really recognizable, but some not at all. So you can see the Breakwater, which was constructed in 1927, and along with Stern's Wharf in the background. There was no harbor as it is today. And all the land where the current Harbor Business District is and where Santa Barbara City College La Playa Field are today is built on land that was created by the accumulation of sand to the west of the Breakwater. So with regards to the Tidlands Grant, there are really a couple key points. So the city is required to manage and use and preserve these lands in trust for public use. And additionally, the Tidlands Grant requires that all revenues generated within the Tidlands area must be used for operating and maintaining and improving the waterfront. And so these these key points kind of govern how the waterfront operates as an enterprise fund to this day. And moreover, in addition to the governance of the Tidlands Grant, there was a recent update to the City of Santa Barbara Local Coastal Program, the Coastal Land Use Plan. This update was done in 2019. And some key pieces to this update affect the operation of the waterfront as well as the preservation of commercial fishing operations. So this this local coastal plan update prioritizes maintaining a working harbor and gives prioritization to coastal-dependent industries such as commercial fishing and recreational boating. And one of the key guidelines is that facilities serving commercial fishing and recreational boating industries shall be protected and where feasible upgraded. So that that last point really drives a lot of decisions behind the waterfront capital improvement projects, which execute projects really to protect our harbor assets and is really in line with the local coastal plan. So I could spend a ton more time on Tidlands Grant and coastal land use, but I hope this has provided a little bit of background on how it applies to the waterfront operations. Next slide. So now moving more directly onto commercial fishing, the Waterfront Department and the commercial fishing industry have had a long history of collaboration. So to date, some of the efforts and support the Waterfront Department has provided the commercial fishing industry includes the construction and maintenance and operation of an industrial ice house, which you can see at the end of the city pier in this photo here. And so this ice house is really critical for commercial fishing industry. It provides high-quality flake ice for packing and transportation of seafood products. So in addition to the annual maintenance budget and operational costs, the waterfront will be performing a $600,000 renovation of the ice house this fiscal year as a capital project. The waterfront does recoup some costs for charging for ice at five cents per pound or $100 a ton, which is quite cheap for quality flake ice and doesn't fully cover the cost of operating the ice house. Additionally, the city owns and operates and maintains four commercial hoists located on the city pier. So these hoists are used daily by the commercial fishing industry to unload and load gear and catch. And the city most recently replaced hoist number one as an FY20 capital project at a cost of roughly $8,000. In addition to loading and unloading, the city also provides free use of the city pier on Saturdays for the Saturday Fisherman's Market. Local fishermen can sell their catch right from the boat and from the pier. And this market occurs every Saturday from 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And additionally, the waterfront provides reduced slip fees to those engaged in commercial fishing. So fishermen do need to prove that they're actively selling fish product and involved in commercial fishing. And today there are roughly 50 specific commercial fishing slips within the harbor. And finally, the waterfront provides staff time. So there's a lot of involvement with commercial fishing efforts, and most recently, this includes staffing the Commercial Fishing Subcommittee. Next slide, please. So in May of 2019, City Council heard an appeal on a property at 35 Caicedo Chavez. And although the appeal was not approved, the City Council recommended that the Harbor Commission and waterfront engage with the commercial fishing industry and form a commercial fishing subcommittee. Since then, the subcommittee has been formed and has met several times with the main focus being the commercial fishing industry's need for additional shoreside storage and processing facilities. So the past meetings to date have included site visits to the existing commercial fishing properties, needs assessments, looking at what exactly the commercial fishing industry needs in the way of boat storage, gear storage, processing facilities, and potential office space. We began looking at suitable properties, including some existing city properties, and identified a rough magnitude of the funding needs, which seems to be somewhere between $3 million, $3 million and $5 million at this point. And all of this was reported back to the full Harbor Commission. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, for some reference, here's a look at some of the existing commercial fishing properties. There's a 983-square-foot gear storage yard, and so this really just houses storage containers, boats, and trailers. As mentioned, it's roughly 980 square feet, and the commercial fishermen are expressing a need of about 20,000 square feet for this this type of use. And just to note, this this space is currently leased. Additionally, there's a 1,650-square-foot baiting station and cold storage. So this site's roughly 1,650 square feet, and the commercial fishermen are expressing a need of roughly 7,000 square feet for this type of service, and this space is also currently leased. There's also a roughly 8,000-square-foot fish processing facility. So this is a privately operated facility run by Santa Barbara Fish Market, and they process both local and imported fish for distribution. So commercial fishermen express a need for much more processing facility space in the range of 20,000 square feet in addition to this space. And then again, it's worth mentioning the city and waterfront space. So we have the city pier and the ice house and all of the individual boat slips, which commercial fishermen use as well. Next slide, please. So analyzing suitable sites around town has proven, as imagined, that there's there's really not a lot of suitable or affordable areas for commercial fishing space needs. So as outlined previously, the existing commercial fishing space totals roughly 1,000 square feet. And there is an expressed need of roughly 48,000 square feet. So a clear need. Some things to note about property needs is that proximity to the waterfront is preferred, but not necessarily mandatory. And additionally, one single space that's served with all these services co-located would also be really nice, but again, not mandatory. As is the case now, so the existing facilities are kind of spread out throughout town. With regards to city zoning, the most applicable and allowable spaces are ocean-oriented light manufacturing or OM1, ocean-related commerce or OC, Harbor Commercial or HC, and light manufacturing M1. And it's pretty clear that availability within these zoning categories is quite limited. Next slide, please. So now looking at some of the assessment of suitable properties. So the Commercial Fishing Subcommittee extensively reviewed existing city on sites. Some of the sites included the City Annex Yard on Yanana Alley, D-Sal Plant Space on Yanana Alley, Ellis Darnell Water Treatment Facility, and the Fire Training Center. So it was apparent pretty quickly in working with Public Works and Fire that these these spaces are pretty overs prescribed already and needed for both current and future city uses. So as mentioned in the previous presentation, so if the city moves forward with such things like potable water reuse and with D-Sal expansion and water resource operations going forward, these spaces are really critical. And realistically, the city too would likely need to look for additional space and real estate with the future expansions possible. Additionally, there's a potential for further analysis of existing private parcels for potential lease or purchase. But realistically, the efforts are reaching a point where funding is clearly the limiting factor. So even if we have, if commercial fishermen had an ideal space, it would be pretty tough to act on it right now because there's just no no funding present. Next slide, please. So looking forward to the next steps. Although we can continue looking for properties and analyzing the needs, again, the main limiting factor is is funding at this point. So the efforts have identified a rough need of $3 million to $5 million to potentially acquire, develop, or lease and develop a suitable space or multiple spaces. And this is the point where waterfront staff is really seeking direction and some guidance from council on the level of involvement from the city and waterfront going forward. So outlining a few different options for where, how the city can be involved is the budgeting of city funds for support or budgeting of city funds for grant matching opportunities. No funding, but increased staffing levels to kind of support grant efforts and further analysis on on properties. Or we can maintain our current level of city funds and staffing and continued support of the commercial fishing industry. And pretty much regardless, we'll continue working with the Harbor Commission and Commercial Fishing Subcommittee to to any degree necessary. So the staffing support is still there to identify needs and kind of develop a more formal plan. So with that, I'd like to close my portion of the presentation and turn it over to Ms. Kim Selko, Executive Director of Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara. Before I do, I'll put the staff recommendation up on screen on the next slide and review, and I can certainly answer any questions up to this point before I hand it over to Ms. Selko.
Are there questions from the city council members on what Mr. Wiltshire has presented so far? So we're receiving a presentation. And you want direction.
Yeah, so recommendation A is kind of a net by receiving the presentation. I recommend the recommendation B is to provide direction to staff on the role and level of city involvement with further efforts to identify resources and funding for the commercial fishing industry.
I'll start with a question. So do other cities provide all these amenities that we'd like you just described? Do other cities or counties jurisdictions provide those kind of amenities to commercial fishers elsewhere?
Madam Mayor and council members, I don't, I may not have a complete answer to that, but we are kind of unique in a way that we're so geared towards being a working harbor. So some harbors aren't necessarily that designation, and they may be more recreation oriented. But kind of one of our key charges is maintaining a working harbor and supporting commercial fishing industry. So that that investment in infrastructure has kind of always been there as a part of our history. I'd be happy to get back to you, or maybe even CFSP and Ms. Selko could weigh in on other ports and other harbors' level of involvement, and I'd get back to you with a more thorough response.
So to take the the ice house, so we provide the power to keep that cold? Or they pay for the ice, I assume?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, they do pay for the ice, and we cover all of the operating and maintenance costs. Yeah, Madam Mayor, they they do pay for the ice, and we cover all of the operating and maintenance costs. And so it's been in operation since the nineties, I believe. And so this coming up this year is one of our first big renovations and basically a full replacement of the equipment in there to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars.
And so these folks are, this is private business, right? These fisher people?
That's correct. It's it's private business.
Okay, and so do you know why we in, I'm looking here at twenty thousand square feet is needed? Why they haven't secured that that space that they needed before now?
That would be a great question for Ms. Selko and CFSP. Obviously, the cost and and growth of a business over time. So I can't speak to the timing on when they needed their space, but I know that that cost and availability is an issue.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wiltshire, just so we don't paint the picture of takers, 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 and not givers. One thing that does differentiate from us is, if I'm right, is that we get dredging services from the federal government every year that those are only offered to a a working commercial fishery harbor, not a recreational harbor. Is that true?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, again, again, partially true. So the way I understand it, we submit for dredge funding based on kind of a myriad of requirements. Commercial fishing and being a working harbor is certainly one of them. The fact that we have a coast guard station here is is a major component as well. And so there's kind of a laundry list of things that we check off to receive that federal dredge funding and and commercial fishing is is one of those components.
And do you know of any Southern California harbors that are purely recreational harbors that get subsidized dredging?
I don't offhand, but I could look into that.
Okay, but my my feeling is that the coast guard, the coast guard category and the commercial fishery are the the driving criteria for having somebody else pay for our dredging each year. So I just wanted to make sure we get that on your balance sheet. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Wiltshire before we go to Dr. Selko? Okay.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I have been the Executive Director of our local Commercial Fishing Association, CFSP, since twenty fifteen. I'm also a marine scientist affiliated with UCSB. And I also recently became a seafood processor myself when I created Get Hooked Seafood, a community-supported fishery program to deliver seafood to households. Next slide, please. So on behalf of our fishing community, thank you so much for the thoughtful engagement of the City Council and the city staff who've been meeting with us for the past few weeks and months. Next slide. I want to start by just explaining what Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara is. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit with an educational mission focused on creating a thriving fishing community and strong access to local seafood for everyone. And we do this through outreach, education, and partnerships. Our email newsletter reaches twelve hundred subscribers, and we maintain a membership of about sixty to ninety local commercial fishers in any given year. And about four hundred and fifty non-fishing supporters have recently donated to CFSP. We manage the Saturday Fisherman's Market on the city pier and a shared boatyard located on private property at one thirty-two Garden Street, where we sublease space for fishers to store their fishing gear and fishing boats when not in use. And this boatyard, as Mr. Wiltshire mentioned, is a key factor in the discussion today as its future is not secure and its size is much too small for demand. Next slide. Two hundred boats use our harbor each year. We have about double the fishing boats of Ventura and other ports on the channel, and all are small boats that are owner-operated and their family runs small businesses. There are absolutely no corporate fishing vessels in our port. Out of these two hundred fishing boats, about ninety are kept in slips in the harbor, to my knowledge. So fifty of those, as Mr. Wiltshire said, are designated commercial slips, another forty or so in non-designated slips. And we have space for just seven boats at our boatyard on Garden Street. And we think maybe about twenty to thirty of the boats are transient from other ports. So that means about seventy-five other boats need to be stored on private property. Next slide, please. So what do we catch here? We are so blessed to be located on the Santa Barbara Channel, where the biodiversity of our waters is off the charts. We produce a huge variety of seafood, one of the most diverse ports in the country. And this diversity creates resilience, resilience to climate change, markets, and regulatory changes. And I really want to stress that the channel is truly a breadbasket, and our fishing grounds are the envy of ports across the West Coast. I also want to note that many of these species on the list are superfoods. And I see they don't display that well, but we have very many halibut, rockfish, sablefish, urchin, and the list goes on. About twenty different items are in the top ten from year to year because of the diversity and dynamic nature of our channel. So these foods are really important. The nutritional value should not be underestimated. And these fisheries are all sustainable. California is a world leader in the management of their fisheries for sustainability. We do not have overfishing here. Next slide, please. So the value of our seafood is rising, as this graph clearly shows. Nationally, this is the case as well. Seafood demand is rising among all age groups, especially for sustainable seafood like ours. The average price to fishers in our port was over five dollars a pound in twenty nineteen. And in total, this means that about twelve million point eight was split between those two hundred fishing boats. And how do we estimate then what it's worth beyond the docks for the total economic impact? The multiplier that is commonly used is two point four, and I'm sorry that there's a typo there. It should read two point four, not four. And so that means in two twenty nineteen, that the twelve point eight million created thirty-one million dollars in value to the economy. And every fishing job is also estimated to create at least one additional job. So currently, the majority of our catch is taken from the docks directly to LA. And this means we are missing out on the majority of the economic opportunity as well as access to this local seafood for our community. Next slide. I also want to just point out that the future is really bright for our seafood production. Prime fishing grounds are reopening. There are many younger fishers in our port. And these colored hatch areas on the map are depth zones that have been off limits to groundfish fishing for decades. Groundfish is taken by hook and line and traps these days, not trawl boats. And these areas represent a massive increase in fishing grounds that is coming next year. This means double or more of the catch levels we see now. And we will only benefit from this if we provide the infrastructure to support a local seafood industry. Next slide. So to sum up, our fisheries are a well-established local industry on a growth trajectory. Local demand is sharply increasing, and our fisheries are a pillar of our local food security. Just last month, CFSP donated seventy-five hundred pounds of locally caught fish to the Food Bank, enough to make seventeen thousand meals, thanks to grants from the Santa Barbara Foundation and other sources. But most importantly, fisheries are a way to diversify our coastal economy. When we talk about who we are as a community, our working harbor is a cornerstone. Fisheries both support tourism and diversifies us to be more than just tourism. And it reflects our priorities as as a community to actively support it. Next slide, please. So what do we need to support this industry? If we don't have this adequate shoreside space and for storage and processing, we lose our working port. Thanks to the cost of real estate here, storage space is the weakest link for our fisheries. We are so grateful that the waterfront department provides ice and slips and hoists, but we have to have all the components in place to function and benefit from our fisheries. Available and affordable space for storage and processing is at an all-time low. Younger fishers can't afford the private property to store boats and gear the way that last generations have been able to. We see fishers leaving to relocate to other ports where affordable space is available. Increasing cold storage and seafood processing allows us to capture the gains of this industry, maximize the jobs and the economic impact it creates here. We need more local processing to absorb the coming increase in ground fish fish catch. This is kind of akin to the city providing parking for downtown businesses to run the economic engine of the city. We also need policy attention to improve zoning that enables fisheries, infrastructure, and seafood processing. The OM one zone that Mr. Wiltshire mentioned is a fifty-two acre zone between Garden and Caesars Chavez, and it's supposed to prioritize fishing and seafood processing uses. It is fully occupied with almost no fisheries-related uses right now, aside from our nine thousand square foot boatyard. Half of the OM one zone is city-owned land. Examining this land use issue and how zoning can better support fisheries and seafood is an important step to integrate fisheries into the city's economic recovery plans. Next slide, please. CFSP has envisioned a new infrastructure project that we call the Maritime Collective that is designed to address the urgent need for shoreside space for our industry. This will be a multifaceted facility with gear and boat storage space to be subleased to commercial fishermen, but we also hope to add cold storage and processing equipment to be rented by fishermen and fish processors as needed. The demand is really high for these services. The project would also lay the groundwork to make Santa Barbara a hub for the emerging blue economy. The blue economy refers to new ventures that develop sustainable uses of ocean resources for economic growth, improve livelihoods and jobs. The Santa Barbara Channel is already becoming a choice testing ground for these projects. The Maritime Collective would also engage the public with education about our fisheries and ocean. The Maritime Collective is basically a concrete plan to protect our fishing industry and diversify our coastal economy. And importantly, it also satisfies the city's obligations of the Coastal Act and the local coastal plan to provide that adequate shoreside infrastructure, either at the harbor or adjacent to the harbor. La, next slide, please. This is my last slide. So how can the city partner with us? As a foundation for what needs to be done, we ask that you elevate the fishing and seafood industries as a city priority to ensure their long-term viability. Our lack of adequate shoreside infrastructure has been a problem that is well-understood and acknowledged for at least fifteen, twenty years, and we've been working on it since then. We hope that this council will be the one to start chipping away at this task of finding space because, of course, it only gets harder the longer we wait, and we are risking, we are at risk of losing this industry if we further delay. More specifically, we hope you will work with us to find fifteen to twenty thousand square feet for our Maritime Collective project. This includes a hard look at reshuffling uses at city-owned properties, unfortunately, in the OM one zone and at the harbor. Currently, only recreational boat and gear storage is provided at the harbor. And it's a necessary step before we were to embark on pursuing private property, which is far, far more expensive. We hope that you will support our efforts to find funding for for federal grants for the Maritime Collective by providing letters of support and considering a small level of matching funds. And we ask that you integrate fisheries into post-COVID economic recovery planning. Our food systems are a sustainable, renewable resource, and that can hugely benefit locals and tourists alike. To do this, consider adopting a local fisheries economic development strategy, such as the one we submitted to you. It is also critical to begin an implementation plan for the local coastal plan update. Last and most importantly, we feel that at this juncture, it's a critical time to provide council-level engagement and oversight on implementing these activities. We feel that forming a council oversight committee of two council members would be an effective way to help formulate the interdepartmental approach that it'll take to create progress. But no matter what, we are confident that the city of Santa Barbara understands both the obligation and the great benefit of providing the foundational infrastructure and policy support for our working port. We truly believe that our Maritime Collective project will be a fantastic resource and a legacy that contributes to our economy and benefits every citizen in Santa Barbara. And we know it'll make our fishing port the envy of every city on the California coast. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, city staff, thank you so much for your attention, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Dr. Selko? From our City Council members? Ms. Nennen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question at this juncture. Dr. Selko, how how many, in the OM one zone, how many actual properties are there that could be developed into these uses? Are some of them, I'm just remembering in some past properties that we've looked at, that there have been issues with soils or different issues? And if you've identified, are there properties for purchase? For instance, or that could be for purchase, or what would be your preferred avenue on that?
Madam Mayor and Mayor, President Perry, it's Nennen. There are no properties available for purchase in the OM one zone. There are several that potentially could be used for this infrastructure, but they are not for sale. They are in the right size range, and they, you know, have maybe some open area for boat and gear storage as well as some covered area for the seafood processing. But we, you know, through the Harbor Subcommittee process, we have tried to kind of inventory these properties, and and nothing really stands out as readily available.
And and just as a follow-up, are there areas outside of the OM one zone as it's designated now, but that would still be in proximity enough to meet the needs? Or are you really just focusing in the OM one zone?
I know the zones outside of OM one are also possible. And we, you know, have employed radius to keep an eye on properties there, but they are quite expensive. And the next step is to try to apply for federal funds to have a chance of making an offer on one. But none of them really, again, stands out as really an ideal place or size for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll ask my question of you, Dr. Selko, about the history of the last few years. Why your group hasn't purchased something or set aside money? I assume you're all business people who plan long-term, and maybe you could have set aside some money to buy the property that you needed?
Madam Mayor, we've been working with the city for over twenty years to look for sites for this. You may recall that at one twenty-five Caesars Chavez, there was an RDA-held property. And we met with Mayor Helene Schneider and Brian Bossy, the head of RD at the time. And there was great interest in trying to solve this problem with that property at that time, but that property was then lost. And more recently, we made great progress with the Office of Hannah Beth Jackson to take interest in creating a line item in the governor's budget for this project. But that was just prior to the COVID pandemic, and that option is off the table. And in the intervening years, we have been working to find philanthropists and start the process of of working with the California Community Loan Fund as well, who's been interested in this project. So we do for sure anticipate that our commercial fishing fleet will contribute to this. But it's obviously not a single force. It's a lot of small businesses that blink in and out, and it is not something we've been able to gather funds for to date, given that we've had these other leads in the works.
Thank you for your response. I don't think there's any other questions, so people would pop up on the screen. Wait, Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you know how many of the fishermen are that live locally in the city or the county?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, I I don't- Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, I don't know that number exactly, but I do think it's the majority of our members in our organization, at least. There are, as we said, only about twenty-five or thirty transient vessels. There are definitely fishermen who live maybe in Ventura or Summerlin and Carpinteria that trailer their boats to our harbor, but that is mostly a function of how expensive real estate is in the city of Santa Barbara.
And you said you had some facilities, but they're kind of scattered about, and I imagine you pay rent for those. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know how much a year do you pay rent for that?
Yes, we pay about twenty-two thousand dollars a year for the nine thousand square foot boatyard that we rent. I don't know the rental rates of the other fishing businesses that, baiting facility on Gray Avenue and also the Santa Barbara Fish Market facility on Bond Avenue. I don't know those numbers, but, you know, it's a very discounted rate. Basically, it comes out to what we charge the fishermen, comes out to about twenty-eight cents a square foot. And we understand that that is a rate that can't hold in the future with a new property. We imagine that by diversifying the tenants on the property, we can subsidize the rental rates for boat and gear storage, but we still see it going up. And we are planning on working on business planning and financial analyses to really create a more informed assessment. We have applied for a federal USDA grant that would kind of give us the funds, a hundred thousand dollars, to do a feasibility study, and we are grateful that the waterfront department submitted a letter of partnership on that. We should find out about it very soon. Thank you.
Do you know, does the city grant you any space or do they subsidize your industry at all?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, yes, as Mr. Wiltshire alluded to, we have a discount on the city's slips that our fishing boats are in, first, at least some of the slips. And the ice house is an expensive rate of ice. The city hoists are free. But that is the extent of my knowledge off the top of my head of that contribution.
Okay. Have you thought about, I don't know if this is at all possible, but is there any way you could use some sort of offshore location to do this, or is that just counterintuitive?
No, unfortunately, that would be extremely expensive and because of the stormy weather would provide issues with access. And, you know, the cost of the infrastructure would just need to be so much more robust. So I don't imagine that is a practical method to solve this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we would go to public comment. Okay. Thanks, Dr. Selko. Ms. Gorman, are there people raising their hands there?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we do have a number of people who have raised their hands to speak on this item.
Okay.
So I will read out some names here. Leslie Wiscombe, Chris Voss, Michael Nelson, Michael Harrington, Bernard Freeman. So we'll start with Leslie Wiscombe. Leslie Wiscombe, please go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I came to the Commercial Fisher, Fishing Subcommittee as Planning Commission's liaison to the Harbor Commission. I have attended all subcommittee meetings, but I'm speaking to you today simply as a Santa Barbara resident. As Director Wiltshire states in his council agenda report, the subcommittee has toured the facilities, reviewed the need for consolidated, sustainable seafood operations, and identified potential sites for their operations. As Dr. Selko mentioned, CFSP has developed a draft economic development strategy that was sent to you with accompanying letter dated June eighth, twenty twenty. In the Economic and Physical Health section of our general plan, the very first goal is ensuring a strong, diverse economy. As well, California Coastal Act Policy three oh two three four and our Coastal Land Use Plan Policy two point two dash nine state that facilities serving the commercial fishing industry shall be protected and where feasible upgraded. You have a unique opportunity before you today to support the policies and goals of our general plan, Coast, California Coastal Act, and our city's coastal land use plan. The subcommittee has reached a critical crossroads in progress and is asking for your assistance and support as our city leaders. I personally view this as a tremendous opportunity to protect and expand economic activity and diversity in our community through our commercial fisher, commercial fishing operations. This is a local industry where demand is surging that provides local food security and is sustainably responsible. You are in receipt of letters of support, including ones from the Community Environmental Council and a professor of economics at UCSB. The ask is simply that you form a two-person council oversight committee to work with a few city staff, the commercial fishermen, and other community members as necessary to support the industry's onshore facilities in the short term and support the industry's work towards its long-term vision of a permanent maritime collective. Please support the ask by forming the Oversight Committee for this very important effort to help ensure continuation and potential growth in Santa Barbara's commercial fishing operations. In closing, by approving the ask, you as our city leaders are not only supporting economic diversity in our community, both during recovery from pandemic and beyond, but you are also assuring that our commercial fishing operations have the onshore facilities necessary to remain a viable and vibrant industry in Santa Barbara. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Wiscombe. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Chris Voss, then Michael Nelson, Michael Harrington, Bernard Freeman, and Garrett Rose. Chris Voss, please go ahead.
I'm Metta Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Chris Voss. And for the last five years, I've had the privilege of being the president of CFSP. Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara is a unique organization that represents all the different fisheries here in Santa Barbara. This particular project that we've been pursuing is designed to lift all boats. We're an organization that represents all these different, varied fishing efforts, and this particular facility would be beneficial to all the fishermen in the Port of Santa Barbara. I'm a lifelong commercial fisherman here. I was born here in Santa Barbara, and both my children are involved in this, in this industry. For all my professional life, I have benefited from two things unique to Santa Barbara. The first is a community that, for almost a hundred years, made a commitment to supporting commercial fishing. And the second is an environment uniquely situated here at the bend in California that is phenomenally productive, as Dr. Selko mentioned. We are lucky to have the Channel Islands and this unique mixing that happens between the colder water of the north and the warmer water of the south that creates an incredible diversity and abundance here. The fishing community is strong with nearly two hundred independent businessmen. After the initial shock of the pandemic, closed the restaurants and our markets dried up to some degree, there was a surge of demand by local consumers to receive our fish in a direct market way. So we saw increased activity at our Saturday Fisherman's Market. And what that indicates to me is that we're well-positioned to be beneficial to the overall community as we come out of the economic crisis caused by the pandemic. Let's make Santa Barbara a destination for people that value locally-produced, sustainably harvested, and exquisitely-prepared seafood. By prioritizing this proposal, it is critical for the long-term success of the fishing community and, I believe, the strong, diverse economic activity of the broader Santa Barbara region. Please support our proposal, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put into considering this. And I'm really personally grateful for all the sacrifices that all of you make as, on behalf of the entire community of Santa Barbara as city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Michael Nelson, then Michael Harrington, Bernard Friedman, Garrett Rose, Eliza Harrison. Michael Nelson, please go ahead.
Members of council, Madam Mayor, we appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I am a member of the Harbor Commission. I am an outgoing member of the Commercial Fisheries Subcommittee. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, as well as thanking the Harbor Commission and waterfront staff for presenting this challenge to you today. This council is aggressively confronting the economic devastation of the pandemic. It's made stabilization and diversification of its economy a major priority. I believe Dr. Selko's testimony today has revealed that commercial fishing in the seafood industry presents an economic development opportunity that can complement this important priority and make significantly greater contributions to the city of Santa Barbara's economic recovery. While Chris did a great job demonstrating the resilience and the innovation and dedication that characterizes our fishermen and their small, independent businesses, it's important to realize that they are headquartered. These businesses are headquartered in our harbor. They have housing. They have the education needed. They're there. It's an existing business. Mike Wiltshire did a great job demonstrating the tremendous commitment that the city has made and continues to make to the maintenance of our remarkable port. What I would like to emphasize has been touched on today and remind the council of other invaluable, but often overlooked, attributes. Fishing and seafood businesses are statutorily protected uses. There is an array of state and local ordinances and policy initiatives that mandate compliance and enforcement. The California Tide Lines Trust, or Public Trust Doctrine, requires that funds generated on these lands be spent on promotion and improvement of commerce, navigation, fisheries, environmental preservation, and recreation. California Coastal Act dictates that facilities serving commercial fishing be maintained, upgraded, and replaced if moved. The implementation of the Local Coastal Plan Update establishes commercial fishing and a working harbor as a priority coastal-dependent use. It requires the integration of the new zoning ordinance. And finally, the Harbor Master Plan, which is also incorporated in the Coastal Plan Update, specifically identifies boat and gear storage as a priority in need of the Harbor Master Plan. So while so many of the ingredients of a successful commercial fishing and seafood industry are present, I believe what's missing is an economic development strategy that targets the expansion and retention of businesses in this thirty-million-dollar industry, builds on the city's investment in our port, and considers making revitalization of the infrastructure of our historic working waterfront a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Next speaker is Michael Harrington, then Bernard Friedman, Garrett Rose, Eliza Harrison, John Colgate, Brian Colgate, Travis Riggs, Harry La Cornick, and John Stedman. Next is Michael Harrington. Michael Harrington, please go ahead. Michael Harrington, please go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. First, I'd like to apologize for not being as civil-tongued or diplomatic as my predecessors. First thing that I heard the mayor say was that we were looking for some amenities, or if other cities had amenities. And that's like telling a mechanic that the tools in his box are an amenity. I'd like to say that the fishermen at the existing yard have been asking the managers if they could put their leases into their wills. That's how hard it is to get a spot. For many years and for many previous councils, the use of conditional use permits to expropriate the integrity of our OM one zone has quietly progressed. The use of CUPs in the OM one zone has eliminated the very marine users the zone was created to support. The city currently occupies fifty percent of the OM one zone and has repurposed that area for city infrastructure, some of which need not be in the OM one zone. I request that the city of Santa Barbara relocate that storage to more appropriate zones. The permitting of CUPs in the OM one over many years, with absolutely no regard to the purpose or spirit of the OM one, leaves me as, leaves me as a taxpayer to expect this council to correct this malfeasance. Obvious solution is to move the city's storage out of the OM one to make room for valid marine use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Bernard Friedman, then Garrett Rose, Eliza Harrison, John Colgate, Brian Colgate, Travis Riggs, Harry La Cornick, and John Stedman. Bernard Friedman, please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bernard Friedman. And I'm the owner-operator of Santa Barbara Mariculture Farm. I'm a small family farm that sells the Hope Ranch Mussels and Hope Ranch Oysters to many restaurants. I also sell them at the Saturday Farmer's Market. And I'm still a renter. Can't afford to buy a house here. Every time I move, I move a little further away from the harbor. And, you know, essentially, what I am is a farmer. It's a labor of love, not getting rich by doing it. And I do need support by many people to be able to do it. And recently, I'm just working with the California Coast Commission on updating their new regulations for aquaculture. The Coast Commission recognizes the importance of aquaculture and the future of aquaculture that it's going to be playing here in California. We also mentioned the blue, the blue economy is coming and diversification, and there are other ports to your south, Long Beach and San Diego, dedicating space for this new blue economy. And, and so that is happening. And also, you know, we build ourselves, or the city builds itself, of the American Riviera. You know, if you look at the French and the Italian Riveras, you know, those governments have subsidized. You know, it's cultural, it's culturally important to, to, to keep your fishermen fishing. And, and so there's a lot of precedent to, to, to keep this cultural heritage going. And thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Garrett Rose. I don't see Garrett Rose. We'll go to Eliza Harrison. Eliza Harrison, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Eliza Harrison, and I'm here today on behalf of Ocean Rainforest Inc. We are pleased to offer our support for the proposal brought by the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara to form a two-person oversight committee to identify resources and funding that would help support the commercial fishing community. As a bit of background to our work, Ocean Rainforest has developed a kelp cultivation strategy that could support sustainable expansion of mariculture in the Santa Barbara Channel. Our kelp cultivation techniques will be tested in the Santa Barbara Channel over the course of the next three years as part of a contract funded by the U.S. Department of Energy. During the project period and in the years ahead, Ocean Rainforest stands to benefit from opportunities for increased collaboration with commercial fishermen and seafood processors that would be provided by the Maritime Collective, the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara has proposed. Furthermore, we are potentially interested in new office space, gear storage, flow-through seawater tanks, and processing space that could be available for lease, if and when a Santa Barbara if and when a Santa Barbara Maritime Collective is created in Santa Barbara. Thank you in advance for your consideration of their proposal, as well as your time this afternoon.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is John Colgate. I don't see him. Brian Colgate, I also don't see him. Travis Riggs. Travis Riggs, please go ahead.
Hi there. Thanks for the time today. I'm with Santa Barbara Fish Market. We are a local processor here and offloader for several fishermen here in the harbor. And even with this current environment that we're in, we still struggle to work in our facility and grow our business. We purchase fish and shellfish from dozens of fishermen and are proud to provide an outlet for these fishermen to sell their catch and provide them with bait and other amenities to help them keep on the water. And we're proud to sell this fish to our local community and to chefs and restaurants out of town and promoting Santa Barbara seafood and, you know, the amazing reputation that it has. So, you know, please support this proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Harry La Cornick. He's no longer present. John Stedman. John Stedman, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I appreciate your time and your attention to the report given by our Director Wiltshire. I am currently Harbor Commissioner and served as the Harbor Commission Chairman for the year 2019 and 2020. So, just as a matter of context, and my fellow Commissioner, Michael Nelson, referred to the Harbor Master Plan. Originally, 31 years ago, public input was given on that plan. So, you know, when you put that into perspective, maybe we need at least two people on the council to step forward and give some oversight to a very integral part of our community. And the blue economy is a few people have mentioned. I also want to, while I have great respect for the commercial fishing industry and have sat in many meetings, listening to their articulate representation of their community, I also want to not lose sight of the fact that the waterfront does financially provide for other constituents besides the commercial fishing industry. And I want to echo the fact that, you know, we serve a number of stakeholders in addition. For example, recreational boating and other ocean-dependent industries. So, let's not lose sight of that either, that our waterfront budget does include support of all stakeholders, and commercial fishing is one primary stakeholder. So, I want to give my support for the recommendation that at least two council members become involved in oversight on this matter going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our last speaker is Gary Burke. Gary Burke, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Gary Burke. And I've been a commercial fisherman at Santa Barbara for almost 50 years. My original boat was on mooring out there in that harbor, and I've seen a lot of changes. I'm still involved, even in my golden years in politics. I serve on the advisory committee for highly migratory species for Civic Fishing Management Council, which involves all the western states. So, and actually, last year, I testified in Washington defending one of our fisheries here. So I've been around a little bit, and I know a lot about the harbors. And I got to tell you, Santa Barbara is, I've said it a lot of times, it's one of the strongest, diverse, commercial harbors left in California. A lot of them, because of different reasons, buybacks and politics, have gotten greatly diminished, and we still have a great fishing harbor here. You know, we import, what, over 90% of our seafood. It's a problem. And yet, we have all kinds of different fishermen here. Grab fishermen for halibut, hook-and-line fishermen, net fishermen. I mean, everything here still. It's something you guys should support and be glad you have, I think. It's the future. We need the young guys, and this kind of project here would help them because we're not movie stars. As Bernard said, we just make a living. And most of the people don't even like talking or getting in public because they trust the ocean, they'll deal with the weather, not serving the public a hamburger or something. So, any support you could give us would be appreciated, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was that the last speaker, Ms. Clerk? Did anybody else pop up?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that was the final speaker on this topic.
Okay. So, the item is back to us. I'm glad you're all still there. If you would put the recommendations back up. Where does it say to put to council pick? Oh, that was coming from Ms. Selko. Okay. So, Ms. Sneddon, I guess you're kind of the first in the row that I'm looking at. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've taken some notes here, so I hope you'll forgive me. I'm going to read down through some of them. One thought comes to mind is like, you know, what could be more Santa Barbara than this particular industry? I mean, this is our whole community. Long before settlers came, was founded on fishing and the abundant sustainable sea life here. I think it's really a great compliment to diversify our economy. We are seeing changes in retail, changes in tourism, but this plays back into tourism, once it's safe for that to get going again. It's a sustainable industry, and not just sustainable for the environment, but also sustainable jobs. Those jobs will be there. That is an industry that the next generation can invest themselves in, and it will, it'll still be happening far into their future. So it's a safe, sustainable industry. It's supported by the general plan, the LCP, the Harbor Master Plan. I mean, we heard all the different places that this particular use has been supported. I can say for myself, in the COVID pandemic, I signed up for the Get Hooked seafood delivery, which comes once a week. It is amazing that, I can't believe that I was purchasing my fish from not our local ocean right here before that. Why am I spending money as a local to support importing salmon instead of having it delivered to me, fished right from our harbor and from our ocean channel? And one of my favorite things about that is there's a sticker that says who the fisherman or fisherwoman was who caught the fish. And I love, I was pulling out one of a black cod and recognized the fisherman's name on there. My husband's like, hey, I know him, you know, someone we went to high school with. I mean, it's the idea of supporting local industry in this way and growing it in this way is really exciting to me. I think we need to do all that we can to incentivize it. I also feel that we, as a city council, are somewhat responsible for the predicament that this industry is in with the OM1 zone. I brought these issues up, many of us did, when we had that conditional use permit previously, that if we keep one parcel at a time allowing other uses than the maritime uses, what are they left with? And it's making all the property around there so expensive when we parcel by parcel allow it to be used for other uses so that now there's nothing left. And what is left either has contamination problems or is very highly priced because of what we as councils over the years have done in those choices. Making Santa Barbara the hub of a blue economy sounds so exciting to me and just in time of what is needed, especially when we're looking for ways to diversify our economy. So I actually really liked the next steps that were laid out by Commercial Fishermen Santa Barbara, those three steps. And working with CFSB on finding that, you know, up to 20 square foot for fisheries infrastructure. And then that step two, integrating the fisheries into our post-COVID economic recovery, this should be right up there with our conversation. You know, not just the 500 block of State Street, but commercial fisheries and what we can do for that industry. I think it also, the third one, to provide an oversight. I don't know if it needs to be oversight as much as, you know, two council members to really champion this cause and keep eyes on it and keep it moving. I think this whole industry provides resilience, food security, and we could really celebrate that industry here. So I'm just, I couldn't be more in favor of moving this forward. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I heard nothing from Councilmember Sneddon that I would disagree with. My big fear today is, as we've seen with other meetings or joint meetings, is that we all profess our support for this, but nothing tangible comes out of this. And I want to make sure we drive towards really something tangible out of this. So I'm firmly in support of, whatever the word would be, some type of assignment of two council members to some type of role with either the Harbor Commission, the existing Subcommittee, or a combination of both. And that would bring new eyes to it, eyes that are a little further up the food chain, so to speak, with access to interdepartmental relations to work on land use or grant funding or financing. And just as important, easy access to our executive team members and department heads to work on that from a little more of a top level down than bottom level up. Because again, I agree with everything Commissioner Sneddon said into the importance of this. I've lived near the, I've lived within ice age of the ocean every day of my life, except for six months after I got out of school. And what's really cool about Santa Barbara is not only its little crescent location, but what it holds in that area. You can find other commercial fishing ports in Southern California. You can find marinas, you can find food or beverage, you can find hospitality. You can find all that stuff. But there is nowhere, I believe, in California and a commercial fishery. I don't believe there's anywhere in California you can find it in essentially a walkable crescent bay where you have recreational facilities, access to the coastline, food and beverage, hospitality, working commercial harbor, museum over the water, a museum next to the water. I mean, just keep adding the things up that are special. And one of those unique components, of course, is a working harbor, both for the reasons that you heard before, but also the direct economic and community benefit it provides, not only to locals, but also to guests. And then again, the last point that really resonates with me is we don't have to go find these things. We don't have to build a hotel to hope for 12% of every dollar in a competitive marketplace. These people are already here. Their revenue, their revenue sales stream is tracking up. They're sitting on their playground of where they go, gather their product. And we should be so grateful and so supportive to make sure that we solve a decades-old project or a decades-old problem that's just been sitting there and is ready for this type of attention. So again, I'll support wholeheartedly. I won't let that opportunity go without saying I'd love to be one of the two council members assigned. It is in, I'll play the district card. It is in the district, even though I hate to play that card. But I would, the goal today, I think, should not to be a bunch of supportive bobblehead dolls, but to offer something tangible to this particular endeavor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the formation of a Subcommittee because I feel that our fishing community needs to be supported, just like other markets in the community have been supported in finding them a location. I think it's just fair and equitable that they get treated the same. And yeah, I look forward to helping them out in the future with any needs that they may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'm going to try something here. I apologize for this. I have a, potentially, if I can get this to work, a short video. And it just came to me during this conversation, and I was able to find it. So it's 40 seconds in the background on this video is back in the Harbor Festival in 2018. My son, he was 11 at the time, and we go down every year. And he took a lot of photos there for a school project of the fishermen and others down at the harbor. And then he took it home and figured out an app to put it all together. And I just wanted to echo everything that my colleagues have said in support of the fishing industry and all those public comments today. But the one thing is that there's also a cultural aspect to this that makes our city a better place. We're known for all of our events and festivals. And the Harbor Seafood Festival is such a great family festival. And the fishermen are what is at the heart of it. And this is what it means to our family, is one of our greatest memories of one of my sons growing up, because we remember it so well. So if I can get this to work, I hope it will work, so. Okay. So. Did everybody see that by chance? I have no idea.
Yeah.
So, I don't really have much else to add other than I would really like to be on the Subcommittee. This is such an important industry. My former service as the Harbor Commissioner gives me the background on that. And I think everyone spoke for me today, including my son, on the importance of this industry, and I look forward to working on this in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I don't have much else to add. I think my colleagues covered it, but I couldn't let this opportunity go by without voicing my strong support for the three items, the three recommendations that were put forward by CFSB. It would be awesome, actually, if we could get those on the screen, maybe for purposes of making a motion, if that's possible. But, you know, something really struck me that a number of my colleagues referenced, and that's that fishing. And, oh, thank you, that's awesome. This is so reflective of our Santa Barbara identity. And to support this effort to build a sustainable fishing industry and to really make it a focal point of our local economy feels to me that we're leaning into who we are. You know, people often remark to me that, you know, oh, 30 years ago or 40 years ago, Santa Barbara is just this tiny little surf town. You know, and kind of often are implying that I don't remember, you know, or couldn't know what that was like. But the Santa Barbara spirit is still there, and this really reminds me of that, of just sort of recommitting to who Of just sort of recommitting to who we are elementally. And, you know, maybe that's a little bit. Hyper emotional to say, but that's sort of how I feel about this effort. It really feels like us as a council standing behind. The 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 real true essence of who we are as Santa Barbarans, which is about sustainability. It's about food security for our community. It's about standing with local working folks and doing everything we can to support them. So I just, you know, this is. I can't think of anything better that we could do with our time and energy and particularly in light of the challenges. Of a global pandemic where we're seeing our reliance on tourism as and the driver of our economy is really problematic. And and that it's in our interest, in our whole community's interest to diversify our economy and to try to find. Opportunities for the engine of our economy to really remain stable despite some of these external forces. That really challenge us. So I appreciate these three recommendations coming back. And I would like to add my voice to the chorus that I really support them and I'm really, really grateful for this conversation.
Thanks. Ms. Gutierrez?
I just wanted to show my support for the recommendations and I would like to make a motion if it's time.
Can I interrupt you? Mr. Casey had some suggestions about how we could move forward. But we'll go back to you, Ms. Gutierrez. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Hearing all your comments clearly looks like you're going towards those recommendations, which I think is great. My one suggestion would be on the Oversight Committee. I I would recommend instead that you appoint two council members to be part of the Harbor Commission. Subcommittee that's already there for a couple of reasons. One, I think honor that you have a harbor commission that's working on this and keep them engaged. And so join with them in this effort. I think that's value added and good. Rather than creating an additional layer. Of then having two committees that are working on it seems a little more challenging. So I think it gets you exactly what you want. Which is council engagement in the process, but I just think it's efficient and effective to appoint two of your council members to. Be part of that subcommittee at the Harbor Commission. So it's just my recommendation. Happy answering question.
Thank you so much. Well, I haven't made my comments yet and I will be supportive of. Having two council members. Active. There's a lot of enthusiasm and my questions and concerns. I think were obvious. I'm going to be very protective of city owned land. I was in a a meeting this morning. About housing our homeless and not that we would put housing down in that area. That was another thing that I wanted to say. I think that's that's another one of the pressures that's on that manufacturing zoning. And we've had this conversation over the years. Of not closing it in with. Land uses where people are concerned about noise or smell or act to truck activity. That that is an area that we want to keep, you know, for commerce and light manufacturing and like these purposes as well. But there's a lot of competition for city resources. There was, there's a lot of private industries that would step forward. And ask the city for help. And I appreciate that three to five million dollars is needed. And I would encourage grants. I I would support. You asked for letters of support if you're looking for. Grant monies or or private monies. And I'm just hoping that we're realistic that the city of Santa Barbara doesn't have that kind of money. Right now, certainly. And I know, I don't think anyone's asking for that. You've just identified what your needs are. But I would just let you know that city land is is subscribed down there. And I would just be very cautious about allowing other private uses on it. Okay, so that's where I'm at. Ms. Harmon, you look like you're ready to.
I just have a question, if that's okay. So I I appreciate the suggestion to put the two council members as part of the Harbor Subcommittee. But I'm or committee, but I'm wondering if maybe that doesn't give those two council members the kind of flexibility that they need. Because I I'm wondering if maybe CFSB framed it this way so that those council members could really. Have the kinds of conversations without necessarily, it's not about setting and publicizing the agenda, but those two council members. Really putting their heads together and and working and having some real flexibility. I'm wondering if maybe it's a question, Madam Mayor, for the city attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Harmon. Another idea I had was was appoint two council members as liaisons to the subcommittee. They're then not voting members. So then you don't have Brown Act issues and other concerns that I I hear you going. I'm just worried if you if you appoint a two council member Oversight Committee, you are kind of restricting those to being public noticed. Meetings of those two council members. And I'm not sure that then we have two formal committees that are working on this issue. So I was suggesting either. Point to the subcommittee or you can make them liaisons, which I think gives them more flexibility that maybe that's what you're thinking of.
I guess I'm I'm wondering, in the same way that we have sort of two council members working with staff to think through. Before we come to present to council on the Formation Committee for Civilian Oversight, is that something that the two council members could do on this? Or is, I guess I I don't understand the Roberts Rule or the Brown Act rules on how these could be different.
And thanks for asking. That's why we're having this dialogue. You know, that was kind of an ad hoc committee. You're just meeting a couple of times and then bringing a recommendation back to council. What I'm hearing this is more of a standing committee type thing that's going to be ongoing. That then leads it into, from a Brown Act standpoint. Of having to be noticed meetings if you call them an Oversight Committee. For instance, you created the the Downtown Committee. And you created an Oversight Committee on the NOVAC Report Implementation. Both of those are noticed public meetings. And that's the structure they need to go at. So that's, that's where I'm trying to think of a different way of not having an Oversight Committee. But you could appoint liaisons, you could appoint them to the existing subcommittee. Those just might be options that get you where you want to go as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd be interested to hear.
Ms. Harmon, you would, as elected officials, you can be as active with the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara group. That's your, that's your community work out there. So, but you would go back to the Harbor Commission Committee. And it looks like they've done such good work and are connected to the subject matter. So what I'm worried about is that we're going to have some competition for people wanting to be on that committee. I I think I've only heard two so far, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Friedman. So, Ms. Snedden, were were you going to volunteer to be on that committee too? Okay, oh, good. Then maybe we just have two and we don't have to have a runoff.
I'm going to voice my full support for council members Jordan and Friedman. They have combined between them experience with Planning Commission, with land use issues, with Harbor Commission. I would like them to have the full flexibility that they need, however, and liaison doesn't. I don't think quite hit the mark on that. With liaison, you know, sometimes you're you're a a go between. But you're not really driving the conversation. It's it's more bringing that information back to council, the way that I see.
They would be members of the committee, right?
So members of the committee was another. And I and I think if there's, if there might be consensus. On who those two members are, it it might be worthwhile to have them weigh in on. What type of flexibility or how they see the role that they might perform. And we had, we had Councilmember Jordan and Friedman jump on it. And so maybe they have some input into what that role would be, but I I would like them to be able to work with. Planning Commission if needed, Harbor Commission if needed. I think this is going to take, you know, economic development if needed. I think it is going to take more than. Just a Harbor Commission focus. But when the, you know, I'm happy to move the the three recommendations. Of the Commercial Fishermen Santa Barbara recommendations, those three with council members. Friedman and Jordan in the capacity I think that that they see fit.
Okay, let's hear from them then. Mr. Jordan, did you want us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I would just echo Mr. Casey's idea of full flexibility and. Ability to go go wherever. I I don't believe the Harbor Commission Subcommittee. By numbers of participation from the Harbor Commission is a noticed meeting. I think it's just a group, a working group. And that's the kind of a flexibility I would love to have also. So if it's just supporting, just appointing as members of that Subcommittee. That would be great. I fully intend also to go chase down a planning commissioner who's been participating. And ask that planning commissioner to come back on too, because she's, she's already got a year of working with that. That Subcommittee also, and it'd be a shame to lose that that history also, so.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
I'm of the same mindset here as Councilmember Jordan Sneddon in joining the working group, but also that allows us the flexibility to look at some of these other issues. And the discussions we have out of the working group will help us refine where we need to go within that. And we can, having two of us there, we can definitely. Plot a good course as as the issues come forward. So don't have much more than that.
So I think the motion, which Ms. Snedden initiated, is to appoint Jordan and Friedman to the Subcommittee. They liked that flexibility, ma'am, and to pursue the three suggestions by the CFSB. Is there a second, please?
Seconded.
Okay, that was Friedman's voice. Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Thank you. Did you get that, Ms. Clerk?
Madam Mayor and Council, I have the motion for item seven. As a motion by Mayor Potem Snedden, seconded by by Councilmember Friedman. To appoint council members Jordan and Friedman to the Subcommittee and to pursue the three suggestions by the CFSB, which are. To work with the CFSB on finding fifteen to twenty thousand square feet for fisheries infrastructure. To integrate fisheries and all local foods in the post-COVID economic recovery and to provide council level oversight on those activities. Okay?
Thank you.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember?
You faded out, Ms. Gorman?
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Harmon?
Thank you, yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Snedden?
Yes.
And Mayor Mario?
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for your contributions, the public commenters. Thank you so much. I guess we're not running that late. Thanks for hanging on, though, during the other items. We will close this item. We will keep going on our agenda. Maybe take a break unless we can power through. We're on number eight now. Ms. Clerk, can you read that into the record? And we'll get started on that one.
Certainly. Item eight, update on proposed amendments to the Historic Resources Ordinance, Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter thirty point one five seven.
And who is our staff member on this one? Ah, Ms. Hernandez, welcome and and take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I am Nicole Hernandez, the city's architectural historian and. Most of you have seen me. I'm usually here twice a year to do landmark designations. The purpose of today's hearing is to give you a update on the status of the proposed amendments to the Historic Resources Ordinance. And how how far we've come since we've been really working on this since November nose to the grindstone. So I'm gonna give you all the other review of the changes that we've proposed. The next slide. So just some background. In two thousand twelve, the city adopted our historic resources element of the general plan. And there were several implementation action items that directed supporting and updating the Historic Resources Ordinance. To ensure up to date provisions and procedures and permanent protection of historic resources. Next slide. So the objectives of the ordinance include updating terms and definitions, developing criteria and a process to establish historic districts. Streamlining the designation processes, increasing enforceability, improving organization of the chapter and eliminating redundancies. Next slide. So one of the big changes proposed is moving the chapter from Title twenty two twenty two, which is the. Environmental chapter to Title thirty as part of the zoning code. It would be Chapter thirty point one five seven. And this is the zoning code. And the benefit of doing this is litigation and enforcement. Zoning amendments result in shorter statutes of limitations. And property rights are encumbered not only by designation, by enactment of the zoning amendments. We have revised the format to be consistent with Title thirty. Next slide. So we did some updated definitions and language and I'll overview them now and I'll go in deeper a little bit later. We want to be consistent with the state and national historic preservation standards. We are now a certified local government. That is a program through the National Park Service that's filtered through the State Historic Preservation Office to all the local governments to ensure we have. The credibility and are meeting best standards and practices. So some of this includes renaming. Our current potential historic resources list to the historic resources inventory. This puts us in consistent language. With other communities along the coast as well as the state. And as all buildings on that list are considered historic for the purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act. So it's a little more. Direct as to what it means to be on that list by the name. And defining architectural historian. Or urban historian is the term that we have now. Architectural historian would be meeting the preservation professional qualification standard provided by the Secretary of Interior. So. That staff member will always have the qualifications required by the national standards. Next slide. Eliminating the resolution of intention step when designating a resource. We have to, this causes a lot of delay in designations. And confusion of to why we're bringing up one hearing to just set a date for the next hearing. We're also enacting that the city's architectural historian is authorized to list properties on the historic resources inventory. For consideration for future designation. Right now, you have to have a hearing to be listed on inventory, another hearing to set up a. Designation and then another designation hearing. So we're trying to streamline the whole process. Next slide. We are adding criteria and process for designation of historic districts. Our current ordinance has no process. Or criteria for districts. So we don't really have anything legally in our ordinance to designate districts. So we're adding that language in. And we're going to clearly define, or we have clearly defined major and minor exterior alterations. So that it's clear what major alterations would go to the Historic Landmarks Commission and what minor exterior alterations can be resolved. On the staff level with the authority of the architectural historian to issue a certificate of appropriateness, which is a national term used. For sort of a certificate you get that says the work you're doing is appropriate for your historic resource. And it will also streamline getting some of the more minor projects through the process more quickly. Next slide. We removed a reference to the demolition review study area, which just was one area of the downtown where we reviewed everything over fifty years old. But as the agent for the California Environmental Quality Act, we need to review anything over fifty years old and discretionary review. So we're gonna add that protection citywide through our historic resources inventory review process. And we're gonna, there was one section for surveys, but we're gonna move that into the historic resources inventory process. And we also add a section on enforcement and penalties. Next slide. So just for everyone's understanding, we have four types of historic resources in the new proposed ordinance. We have our landmarks, which are highest tier. Of historic resources. These are designated by city council. There are currently one hundred and thirty three of them. And they cannot be demolished unless there was an act of nature like an earthquake or a fire that demolished them. Structures of Merit are next tier of historic resource. We now have four hundred and thirty of those. These are designated by the Historic Landmarks Commission. And they have a little more flexibility with alterations. So a lot of single-family houses have these, and the HLC will review them for an addition or something to make it so it's livable, but still protected for its integrity. And they can be demolished, but only through an environmental impact report. So it is difficult, but it's not completely prohibited. And we have structures listed on the Historic Resources Inventory, which are historic for the purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, but not yet designated. And then we have our historic districts and all the historic buildings that contribute to the significance within a district. Next slide. So we really worked on incorporating consistent format for each of the designations, so they all have the same language, and it's familiar of the procedure for designation, repair and maintenance, exterior alterations, relocation and demolition. Next slide. We did add having historic integrity as a criteria for our resources. The historic integrity means that it retains a lot of its authenticity and original features. Sort of the test is if somebody came from the past and was put in front of the building, could they recognize it? And if they could, that means it sort of retained its integrity. We want it to appear and show its authenticity. We also added criteria for historic districts to be consistent with the National Register Criteria and trying to be consistent with state and national language as a best practice. Next slide. Designating authorities, they went through this really quickly before, but just to bring it back, City Council designates landmarks, and there we are proposing they will also designate historic districts because there's so many properties involved. Upon recommendation of HLC, the Historic Landmarks Commission designates structures of merit, and the architectural historian can add properties to the inventory. Next slide. So here's how we can define clearly major alterations that the HLC would review in a discretionary hearing, which would be visual changes, not intended for restoration. So like a large two-story addition is the biggest one that we see at HLC. Over one story, visible from the public right of way. We also have relocations and demolitions. And next slide. Then we have minor alterations. These are something that the architectural historian with the expertise required can review. This would be sort of in-kind replacement or repair of important details. For example, if you have a deteriorated wood window and it needs replacement to match the existing, they could work with that on an administrative level. Also, restoration of projects to their original condition. You know, if someone's taking out some aluminum sliders that were added in the fifties and putting back something more, putting back an authentic or something that matches something authentic, that would be an administrative approval and color changes appropriate to the style. We want to help people when they are trying to really benefit the buildings, get through the process quickly, and this is why this is proposed. Next slide. We did add when people appeal to council that evidence presented to council is limited to the record, the proceedings considered by the commission and its determination. This will encourage resolution of all issues before the HLC. Of course, new public comment will always be considered, but this is really for the applicant. We have seen lots of times they'll do sort of a small presentation to HLC, request appeal to council, and present a lot more evidence that had the HLC seen that, they may have made a different determination. And I know Ariel is online, too, and he can answer a lot of questions about this. It's a pretty big legal item. Next slide. Historic districts, since we're adding the section on the historic districts. Nationally, all historic districts were, used to be called landmark districts when the preservation movement first started gaining momentum, and that term has switched to historic district. And so we're also gonna use the historic district term, but we are gonna keep El Pueblo Viejo as a landmark district. That's what it's called in our charter, and I believe our community is really tied to it. We love our El Pueblo Viejo landmark district. But the Brinkerhoff will change to historic districts, and all new districts will be called that. And we did say all districts must have clearly identified contributing and non-contributing resources identified. We want to know which ones are historic and which ones aren't, as we add those districts in. Next slide. Again, I think I talked about removing the demolition review study area to make it a holistic, all-city-wide. We review buildings over fifty years old. And we do that for the California Environmental Quality Act. They do require that anything that over fifty years old is reviewed. Next slide. And the survey section, doing proactive surveys of historic resources is one of the best planning tools you can utilize to proactively go out and identify historic resources. And we've had several done throughout the city over the years, and that is a goal of the general plan is to continue to do those. And we added that process in the section on the inventory, because once we get the results of a survey, and that is accepted by HLC, we'll add all those buildings to the inventory and hopefully then to be designated. Next slide. Enforcement and penalties that we were added. We added that misdemeanor, any person who violates a requirement of the chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Nature of violation, moratorium, if an entire structure is demolished. There may be a moratorium for the development of the property up to five years. Next slide. We have civil penalties, including doubt for demolition equal to one-half the fair market value of a property prior to the demolition, and alteration equal to one-half the cost of restoration of altered portion of the historic resource. Next slide. And other remedies, the city attorney may also pursue any other action or remedy authorized under the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, state law, and are in equity of any violation of this chapter. The civil remedy shall be in addition to not leave any criminal prosecution and penalty of other remedy provided by law. And I just wanted to add, I believe the city attorney's office really worked on this and researched other communities up and down the California coast, and this is pretty consistent with what most communities have now. And Ariel, this is his bias as well.
Yeah, if I might, Madam Mayor, members of the council, enforcement's really critical with historic resources, because once they're gone, they're gone. And what you see is an extraordinarily stiff penalty section that we are recommending. Of course, this is policy decision, but we think that it's a tool that we need to protect resources.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Great. And we just have a few more slides. So next slide. And here's one, continuing violation, each and every day violation continues. It's deemed to be a new separate offense to a maximum civil penalty of two hundred and fifty dollars for each and every offense. Next slide. So I just wanted to go through what we've gone through so far. So starting in November, we really got to work on just getting a draft so that we could have really start some conversations in the forum at the Historic Landmarks Commission, where people could talk, and it could all be publicized, and everyone could voice their opinions. So we finished the draft, and on April twenty-ninth, we did an introduction at HLC where we introduced all the concepts, and then we posted the draft for public review period, and for weeks, and we extended it for written comment through June seventh. So on May twenty-seventh, we had an HLC meeting where all public comment was taken, and the HLC made their own recommendations. Next slide. So since that time, we have been editing that draft and really taking in the many, many public comments and taking in each one. So I worked on it for a couple of weeks, and then the city attorney's office worked on it for a few weeks, and then we sent it to the State Historic Preservation Office for their comments. As a certified local government, they review it as well to make sure best practices are being considered. And some of the changes that the HLC and public recommended reform at changes, consolidating repetitive sections, further refining definitions of archaeology, neighborhood, also defining buffer zones, like maybe including buffer zones around historic districts to have sort of a buffer between the district and maybe incompatible development to soften that section, as well as cultural landscapes and defining what those are and how those are treated. As well as the HLC did recommend that fifty-one percent of owner consent be required for historic district, and eighty percent of the buildings in a historic district be historic and contribute to the significance of the district. Next slide. And the California Office of Historic Preservation did have a few recommendations. They said broadening the term, the architectural historian term to call it to say qualified historic preservation professional that includes somebody with a background and experience in education and history, archaeology, architecture, or historic preservation. Considerate, they suggested using the National Register Criteria for all levels of significance. Right now, we have eleven criteria for individual buildings. And each one of those eleven can fit in the four National Register Criteria, and we will probably make a matrix showing how that will happen without making sure that all our buildings are protected, and we won't lose any historic resources by changing the criteria. And they suggested if a property owner does have the right to state their approval or objection to designation, it should be codified in our ordinance. Next slide. So the next steps that we have planned are to, I still need to just take those suggestions from the State Preservation Office and put them in the revised draft, and post the revised draft for several weeks for public review, go back to HLC, get their recommendations, and then we'll take their recommendations, revise it, and take it to Planning Commission, City Council Ordinance Committee, and back to you all at City Council. So that's where we've been, and that's our work so far. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Hernandez right off the bat? Ms. Sneddon, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, just thank you. Thank you so much for making this happen. It's been a long time coming, and now you've just full-force working on this, and thank you. I was wondering, I mentioned it to council last time, could you mention that the website that where you can look up historic landmark, and it shows the report and the link to the photographs?
Yeah, yeah. It's, I think it's W, I mean, it's Santa Barbara Historic Preservation HRO amendments. And I can email you that, too. I used to have a slide with the website on it.
I didn't mean to spot there. Just a couple really quick questions. I did have some questions by email about people who had given their public input, and they saw that there was considerable public input, and they were wondering when the first opportunity to see the second draft would be. And it looks like from this slide, would it be to the HLC meeting? Would that be the first time it's visible?
We'll probably post it in advance on that website. So we have a website just for HRO amendments that shows the original ordinance and the first draft, and then we'll post the second draft, and we'll make an announcement. We'll probably post it for a few weeks so they have time to read it. And then we'll talk about it the next HLC hearing. So we'll let all interested parties that have participated in the past, and there you go. Thank you. Thank you.
People who contribute to this really want to make sure their contributions make it in. I know you know this.
Their comments were so important and impactful, and it's really been, it's been a wonderful collaborative process with the public.
And then just two more quick questions. Can you, so El Pueblo Viejo will be a landmark district, and then starting with Brinkerhoff, it goes to historic district. But there's no real material difference in that designation, landmark or historic, it's just a name change moving forward?
Yeah, that's how they've traditionally been. They're sort of interchangeable. Some communities use landmark district, some historic district, but nationally, it's changing. It's just a little more descriptive of what it is.
Thank you. And then you said a discussion of buffer zones, but is that what is the status of that discussion at this point?
So so far, in the newest version that hasn't been posted, we did put a definition in of buffer zones. And it is about softening between a historic district and a compatible development, a little defining how wide that is and how far that goes is maybe case by cases, each district has different boundaries and different situations. And we also added some information in the information in historic districts about the capability of adding a buffer zone and what's that, what that looks like. So they can add it, we can add it in the application for the designation of each district, what their buffer zone will look like.
So then that buffer zone would be defined at the time of designation, so that so it's not like case by case. Okay. And then just one more question. Eighty percent in the district would need to be historic, and then you said fifty-one percent. And I'm wondering, is that fifty percent plus one, or is it fifty-one percent?
But they said, this was an HLC recommendation of the owner consent, and they wanted they literally wanted fifty-one percent of the owners to be in support of a district before passing it. So I'm not, they weren't, they didn't define it as fifty plus one. They just said fifty-one.
Fifty-one percent. And then just a last question. So how are the number of residents counted? For instance, if you have spouses and both names are on the title, is that two votes, or is that one resident vote? Does a household have to come up with one vote for the house? Like, how does that get since it seems significant if you need that much approval? How does that get counted?
I might have to work on that with the city attorney, because that recommendation just came through, and I think that needs to be clarified. For sure. We were just interviewing other cities, and they all just were like fifty-one percent owner approval, but I think we can talk about how it needs to be made so that we have legal ownership of each house.
And we don't need to right now. Thank you. I just was curious if that had been.
It's a good thing to keep as we go through the next draft to make sure we have that understanding.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. Really excellent update, and thank you.
Mr. Jordan, are you ready to ask questions?
Jotting notes away. Hi, Ms. Hernandez, how are you? So as you know, I'm sure this is not my subject matter area of expertise, just in Planning Commission days, just smart enough to be dangerous to ask all the dumb questions. So I'm gonna continue that role a little bit. So what I remember, a lot of the conversation was in terms of buffers, was that we would work to establish a a protected or designated site, and depending upon the characteristics of that site, like some are wood, some are adobe, we would, we would set our buffers up almost like individualized to that type of protection. Probably just like dumbly, I remember like, if you have an adobe building, you don't want to put it in shade, and you want, you want your setback to be greater there than maybe a designated site that's out of wood, where you could run that type of, you follow what I'm saying? So is that, is that still being talked about, or will that type of level of protection be incorporated when this is done?
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with making sure things in that buffer zone are compatible with the district, and each district has its own characteristics. We have some we have about six districts that have been identified that are waiting to be designated. Once we get through the ordinance, and we have, you know, a little Spanish colonial revival district down by the beach in West Beach. So those buildings tend to be by nature, a little bit bulkier. And then we have the tiny little one-story Victorians over on West De La Vina Street. So they're each gonna need to be compatible with their own district, and they kind of lend themselves. We'll have to craft that language with each district. I think it's gonna have to be district by district sensitive.
And then will most of that burden then be on the HLC to apply it on the ground type of thing?
I think so.
Okay.
They have the expertise to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is we're on a path to recognize the uniqueness between districts, or maybe even the uniqueness of inside this, an existing district to where you don't, you don't get to build the same thing on one block. you don't, you don't get to build the same thing on one block as you do on the other because you're just in a district. That there will be, there will be an avenue to, to, to work, work with that, right?
Yes, yes. And we've even drafted some guidelines on how to build, you know, next to a historic building. What, what key things to look for if you want to try and build something new next to a historic building? And trying to direct applicants, like here's just some key tools to help you in your planning. And the best part about really identifying these and is that you let applicants know or new people who are buying something that is developable, that they're next to a historic resource and can start from the ground, planning to be compatible, like not looking at it in a vacuum.
And is there, is there a gap between um, identifying and designating that will cause a problem? So is there a timeline where you identify, but you don't get to designation and will the eventual work product here offer protection as soon as you identify before it's designated?
Yeah, there is. That really comes from the California Environmental Quality Act. And if we identify something that's eligible to be designated, the sequel requires us to evaluate any impacts to it, even if it's not designated. So um, that would be, that's sort of the, the process that really puts pause on the project. Like, let's, that's where we get into reports and say, is it actually historic? Let's identify, what are the impacts gonna be and how, which path do we want to take? So that's a lot of the groundwork we do all the time at the HLC.
Okay, I think you're gonna tell me you're just kinda um, out of luck for stuff that we agree is important or iconic, but won't meet the criteria of identifying and designating because I know there's a criteria. And I, I don't have a good example. It's been too long for me to figure out a good example, but I'm sure they're all over town. So it's stuff that um, that we all agree is really important, but this is not the avenue to protect that because of the designation criteria, right? That, that you have to cross your fingers and hope it gets solved that HLC or Planning Commission or something like that, right?
Yeah, like we have a lot of important things that um, might be newer. They might not be historically important, but they're still important, you know, newer buildings. So this is, you know, really clearly historic resources and meeting those criteria gives um, us, you know, credibility. We, so that people don't think we just designate anything. We do follow the criteria and we, we really take each one into account and we try not to just designate something just because, you know, so, because it is, it affects every owner down the line and um, we wanna, we don't wanna be um, sound like we're not following some really good rules and going through.
The flip side is that it provides certainty too. So you know, you know, right off, it's there, it's designated. Now, now you have the burden if you're in the adjacent area to, to protect it rather than it's a one-off and somebody gets away with something too. So it's really important.
Exactly. The more we, the more we have that clarity that this is historic and that's not, the more clarity people have going in when they're buying their properties.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions for Ms. Hernandez? I'm assuming we have some public comments. I did have a couple of questions on designation authority. Um, the architectural historian adds properties to the historic resources inventory. It, um, is that you, the architectural historian?
Yes.
Okay. And, and how does that work with the property owner? They, they don't have a say so being added to that list?
So, so far we have drafted in the ordinance that someone comes in and I review it and I say this building is eligible to be designated, you know? We will let them know that um, determination along with all the reasons why and we call it, we've called it a significance report. And, you know, then it'll be added to the, the inventory unless they want to appeal it and then they can go to Historic Landmarks Commission. And that was our first place of appeal. Like if they're, no, it's not, I'm gonna, I really don't want it to be, we'll take it to the commission. So that would be their first avenue, yes. So it's not just the end of me, ends with me, yes or no. They have one more avenue to discuss it at least.
Okay. And then this fifty one percent owner consent, that has to do with the historic district, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that number seems low to me on where I'm sensitive to property owners having um, their say so and um, so I guess I'll do my research on why that number is so low. But did I hear you say that it's what the HLC found in other uh, cities?
Yeah, so we did the research as staff in other cities and it was pretty much all at least above fifty percent. Um, there were a few up and down and we asked HLC to make a recommendation. And we really, Ariel and I discussed that we thought this item was really something for HLC to recommend and then you all to discuss as a decision maker process. And we can give you the research. We have some um, tables of different communities, what they've each decided to do. We can provide that when we come back to you so that you can see that as well.
Okay, I'll do my research. Thanks. Thank you. And then, so the question I have too, and this is also the research I'll do before this comes back is how will these historic districts affect housing production? That's a pretty important um, goal of our city. Do you have any um, ideas on that, Ms. Hernandez?
Well, I don't think it's gonna impact it much, anything in a, we already identify most of the buildings that are historic through this California Environmental Quality Act and things need to be compatible. And I haven't, since I've been here, seen one person want to tear down a historic building to put housing. Um, I've seen people put a lot of accessory dwelling units behind historic buildings and I've seen apartments um, proposed projects next to historic buildings and we've worked with them to be compatible with the historic buildings. And we've seen quite a few of those projects over the years. Um, I don't really.
There can be development in the district. Okay.
Yes, it's like keeping the old and getting new and it's kind of the best of both worlds.
Okay, good. Well, I have my work to do then too. I don't see anybody else popping up to ask questions, so we'll see if there's public commenters, Ms. Hernandez. Don't go away. Ms. Goran?
Uh, Madam Mayor and Council, there are no public commenters on this item. No one with their hands up or otherwise indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, so this is to receive an update, so I don't think that we need a motion, but I'm standing by if anybody has any closing remarks. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, thanks to the city attorney's office and your office and um, the Historic Landmarks Commission and all the other uh, city staffers who've been working on this. Thank you so much. We'll close this item. And um, our staff needs a break uh, at this time in this city council meeting. So we're on a ten minute break. Thank you. Ms. Clerk, I think we're ready to reconvene this August fourth, twenty twenty meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. And we are on item number nine. If you would read that into the record, please.
Certainly. Item nine, request from Mayor Mario and Councilmember Friedman to discuss the resolution opposing proposal to restart offshore oil production and transport oil by truck.
Thank you. So this is an item that's brought by two uh, council members, myself and Mr. Friedman in this case. And we are asking our city council to take action uh, as described in our, our memo and our resolution. And um, my, my comments are that uh, this is a critical and straightforward issue for our council to consider. Uh, Councilmember Friedman and I are asking our colleagues to oppose an application to restart offshore oil production and the trucking of crude oil on our highways. Our community has been harmed by oil uh, accidents and spills and outright disaster uh, historically and in recent times. It is appropriate for our city council to take a position on this proposal that will go before county government officials uh, later this year, maybe as early as next month. Uh, the environmental analysis says that even with mitigation measures, a truck accident or incident would create significant and unavoidable impacts to biological water and cultural resources, especially if a spill was to enter a waterway or a creek, get into the ocean. Of note, seventy trucks per day are proposed as part of the project. Part of the route is along the Gaviota Coast, a precious resource for our residents and the entire community. Our city is committed to addressing uh, global uh, climate disruption as reflected in our plan Santa Barbara, which is our, our general plan document. And in our, and in our commitment to a community choice energy program and the creation of a new city department, the Department of Sustainability and Resilience, which purposely focuses on energy and climate policy and programs. Uh, this commitment recognizes the need to reduce our dependence on oil and gas as fuels and to find alternatives to industries that. and to find alternatives to industries that contribute to the burning of fossil fuels. Our council has taken positions against dangerous oil transport and against offshore oil production in the past. We have been consumed by the COVID-19 pandemic, but the threat to our well-being caused by climate change is real and urgent. I urge my colleagues to protect the city of Santa Barbara residents, the economy, and our natural environment by this action today. Please carry on the sensibility born from the 1969 platform blowout and the determination that came after the Plains All-American Pipeline rupture in 2015. We owe it to public health and public safety. Mr. Friedman, your remarks, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to just add the following to what you've added. This resolution is consistent with over 50 years of policy in the city, Santa Barbara dating back to the 1969 platform blowout. In addition, most recently in 2017, the city council reaffirmed its opposition to offshore oil development. And in 2019, our updated city legislative platform supports the prohibition of offshore oil development. The environmental and economic impacts on the South Coast from a potential spill such as the 2015 Plains All-American Pipeline would be tremendous, especially during this extended and uncertain economic recovery that we're in right now. So to have another type of spill would really have devastating impacts to the South Coast in particular. With communities across California, including our own, now planning for sea level rise, supporting an offshore oil project would be inconsistent with both policy and public expectations on the measures we need to implement as we prepare for changes to our coastline. So I think, given the history of Santa Barbara, the support of the residents here for opposing offshore oil, this resolution is consistent with that.
Thank you very much. Do any of our council colleagues have questions for Mr. Friedman or myself? Thank you. We'll go to public comment. Ms. Clerk, I'm assuming there are some people who would like to speak to this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a number of persons who have indicated they wish to speak on this item. I will call some names here, and then I will add some more also. We have Lee Heller, John Coy, Aaron Begari, Maggie Hall, Stephanie Proofer. So we'll start with Lee Heller. Lee Heller, please go ahead.
And members of the council, you have a lot of people wanting to speak on this item today, so I'll keep it brief. I know this is only a resolution because you do not have the literal power to deny ExxonMobil the permit they seek to truck oil through our region. But your voice is important in informing those who do have the power, the County Planning Commission, and most likely the Board of Supervisors. And you need to use it because the city is hugely affected by oil and gas production and transport, even if it happens outside the city limits. If oil trucking is permitted, the region will pay the price. The number of truck trips involved will add substantially the locally generated greenhouse gases when our area has not only failed to reduce our carbon output, but has overshot previous greenhouse gas emissions by 20% or more. That's not just an air quality issue, but a climate change issue at a time when we are already facing immediate climate impacts here, from extreme drought to huge fires to longer and more dangerous heat waves. If pipelines can rupture, and we know they do, oil trucking is an even greater accident waiting to happen on roads that are already dangerous and prone to accidents, especially by large commercial vehicles. Remember what happened to the 101 north of the city after the 2015 Rafufio Pipeline spill? Traffic on that crucial artery was disrupted for days. I was president of the Board of the Environmental Defense Center at the time, and I remember the impact of that spill well up the coast on Santa Barbara. Word got out nationally and business took the hit as people were scared away from an area assumed to be a toxic spill site. I've been coming before this body for over a decade, asking you and your predecessors to speak up against oil and gas development, and this council has always stepped up. Please do so again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is John Coy, then Aaron Begari, Maggie Hill, Stephanie Proofer, Ben Pitterly, Brian Anderson, Ian Bocky, Katie Davis, and Michael Lopez. Next is John Coy. John Coy, please go ahead. John Coy, please go ahead. We'll come back to Mr. Coy. Next is Aaron Begari. Aaron Begari, please go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Aaron. I'm a graduate student. I'm working on my PhD in math at UCSB. I just, I think that it's kind of a no-brainer to oppose this proposal. I think trucking is really dangerous, and people already die every year on the route that they're proposing to take. And like, just this past March, we saw a truck on the same route crash and spill 4,500 gallons of oil into the Kiama River. And like, that's only going to continue. And then, this, I think, is terrible for wildlife. And like, I think just an hour ago, everyone here was talking about like, the incredible biodiversity that we have in Santa Barbara and like, the importance of the fishing industry to our economy and our culture. And I think that the possibility of more spills is, you know, it kills the local wildlife and it destroys any potential fishing industry. And then, also, I just think like, the Board of Supervisors has recognized a climate emergency in Santa Barbara. And it seems like what we should be doing is, you know, transitioning away from the things that are causing that. And so, just allowing more oil projects in general seems like exactly the wrong thing to be doing right now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Maggie Hall. Maggie Hall, please go ahead. Maggie Hall, please go ahead. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Oh, apologies. I thought I was unmuted. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Maggie Hall, Senior Attorney at the Environmental Defense Center. We represent Get Oil Out and Santa Barbara County Action Network in opposing ExxonMobil's plan to restart oil by tanker trucks so it can restart three drilling platforms off our coastline. We urge the council to adopt the proposed resolution opposing this dangerous plan. The plan would allow up to 70 oil trucks per day to travel along Coastal Highway 101 and Route 166, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. As we saw just months ago, a tanker truck crashed along this route, spilling 4,500 gallons of crude oil into the Kiama River and killing sensitive wildlife. The purpose of the proposal is to allow Exxon to restart its offshore platforms that have been shut down since 2015, when the Plains All-American Pipeline ruptured and spilled hundreds of gallons of oil along the coastline. ExxonMobil's proposal will result in significant environmental impacts, both from increased offshore oil drilling and the inherently risky practice of trucking oil. These include impacts on wildlife, more oil spills, air pollution, and increased climate change at a time when we should be focusing on clean energy. Therefore, we urge the city to adopt this important resolution and take a stand against this proposal that threatens our local environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Stephanie Proofer, then Ben Pitterly, Brian Anderson, Ian Bocky, Katie Davis, and Michael Lopez. Stephanie Proofer? Please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Proofer. I'm a campaigner with the Center for Biological Diversity, and I'm here representing 3,000 of our members in the county to urge the city council to adopt this resolution. Trucking is the most dangerous way to transport oil. Tanker trucks crash with alarming regularity, and a single accident can close local roadways, cause fires, explosions, and oil spills, and injure and kill motorists. Coastal Highway 101 and two-laned Route 166 are especially risky. Recent data analyzed from the California Highway Patrol showed that between 2015 and this year, there were 216 trucking accidents along Exxon's proposed route. Highway 101 is essential to provide access to and from the city of Santa Barbara for residents and tourists alike. This project would compromise the safety of this highway. In fact, nearly three out of four respondents of a recent poll said they were concerned about the safety of local highways if Exxon's project were approved. An oil spill from a tanker truck could pollute local waterways, kill federally protected species, and contaminate drinking water supplies. This proposal would also restart Exxon's aging offshore drilling platforms and processing facilities. Some of these platforms are more than 40 years old, and studies have shown that accident incident rates, including spills, increase significantly with the age of infrastructure. Records from the federal government show that Exxon's platforms had widespread corrosion and gas leaks requiring emergency responses before they were shut down in 2015. Oil spills near the Santa Barbara coastline threaten one of the most biologically productive ecosystems on Earth and could impact federally protected species, including the blue whales and sea otters. It would also put over 18,000 jobs that rely on this thriving marine ecosystem at risk. Restarting these platforms and the Los Flores Processing Facility will also increase air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions in the county. Exxon's facilities were the largest emitters of greenhouse gases, volatile organic compounds, and PM 2.5 in the county before the 2015 spill. These particles can travel hundreds of miles, so restarting this processing facility will have air pollution impacts in the city of Santa Barbara and beyond. From the 1969 spill to the 2015 spill, offshore drilling has taken huge tolls on the city of Santa Barbara. The city of Santa Barbara has shown leadership regarding offshore drilling. As you know, it was the first of almost 100 California cities and counties to pass a resolution opposing the Trump administration's proposal to expand offshore drilling in the Pacific. It's time to end offshore drilling, not bring it back to life. I urge the city council to pass this resolution opposing Exxon's dangerous trucking and platform restart proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Ben Pitterly, then Brian Anderson, Ian Bocky, Katie Davis, and Michael Lopez. Ben Pitterly, please go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Ben Pitterly. I'm with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper, and I'm speaking tonight to express Channel Keeper's resolution. We agree with the statements and the rationale described in the draft resolution, but to elaborate further, Channel Keeper did express strong concerns when the draft environmental review report for this project was released, for many reasons, but largely because the report doesn't evaluate all of the impacts that resumed oil development could have on the environment. It relies largely on a previous environmental review conducted in the mid-'80s, when conditions, frankly, they were different before new endangered species listings, before some of the coastal areas where trucking would occur were designated as protected and sensitive habitats, and maybe most importantly, before this community developed long-term and near-term priorities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The final EIR just released, it doesn't resolve any of these issues. Rather, the county presents an interpretation of CEQA to justify a failure to update its evaluation of the project. You know, I know many people understandably want to talk about jobs whenever this issue arises, and I understand fully and personally the need to provide for family and put bread on the table. But we also live in a society where we regulate actions that might have a tremendous impact or risk to society at large and our environment, even though profitability might exist. And let's be clear, we're having this discussion tonight because we recently experienced another disaster. Some pumping oil from the Santa Barbara Channel significantly reduces pressure that reduces tar balls on the beach, and therefore somehow pumping channels is a good thing for the environment. The thing is, our channel and the ecosystem that we live in, it's evolved in these natural conditions over millions of years. It's adapted to natural seepage of tar balls on our beaches and in the channel. We're all familiar with that. What our ecosystem hasn't evolved was catastrophic oil spills that we've already seen multiple times in the channel or with imminent and rapid ecological stressors caused by climate change. Resume pumping and transportation of oil along the coastline by truck, it's not a good thing for the Santa Barbara Channel. And by extension, the city of Starford even tonight prioritizes healthy marine ecosystems that support our tourism and our fishing economies. So with that, Channel Keeper recommends that the city adopt this resolution as drafted. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Brian Anderson. Brian Anderson, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's unfortunate that I'm here speaking for the first time without the pleasure of meeting you or the time to discuss the facts of our temporary trucking permit. As mentioned, my name's Brian Anderson. I'm the new asset manager of ExxonMobil's San Ynez Unit, or SYU. Our operations consist of three offshore platforms and a processing facility well-hidden in the Los Flores Canyon. This asset has safely and without incident produced oil and gas for nearly 40 years, and that's a track record we're quite proud of. We've been forced to shut down since the Plains All-American Pipeline incident in 2015. This was a significant negative impact on our workers, those companies that support our operations, as well as the county tax revenues. It's time to bring back jobs, reunite displaced families, and restore much-needed tax revenue. We've applied for a permit to temporarily truck oil northbound on the 101 from Los Flores Canyon, displacing crude that is already shipped across the county until Plains Pipeline is rebuilt. No impact on Santa Barbara. This resolution that you've decided to take up today attempts to make a statement about oil, but in fact, it makes a statement against the 300 workers and contractors and supporting businesses that we've employed at SYU as well as their families. We proudly provided hundreds of families with family-supporting jobs paying 30% higher than the average county job. Employees live and raise their families here in Santa Barbara and in other communities throughout the county. This resolution also makes a statement against schools and the students and families they serve in the northern part of the county. These schools rely on the tax revenues to serve higher populations of underprivileged students. Restarting SYU would provide more than $4.5 million a year in crucial funding for K-14 schools in Santa Barbara County, providing resources for some of the highest-needs schools in our communities in the North. These are the people, the workers, the families, and the youth that a resolution like this doesn't consider and ultimately hurts, especially at a time when so many are struggling in our communities to make ends meet. The city council is taking up a resolution opposing our permit with no impact to Santa Barbara. While communities directly on the truck route, Buellton and Santa Maria have passed resolutions supporting the permit, giving the benefits our facility brings to their communities and to the county. It's very disappointing to see a simple request for a temporary permit get caught in the crossfire of offshore oil development without recognizing the benefits that this would bring to our schools and our community. Now with a better understanding of the impacts to the people in the community in this county, we strongly urge you to take no action on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker, Ian Bocky, then Katie Davis and Michael Lopez. Ian Bocky, please go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Mario and members of the city council. My name is Ian Bocky, and I have the honor of speaking to you today on behalf of Santa Barbara Young Democrats as our new Director of Advocacy and Policy in opposition to Exxon's greedy and dangerous attempt to expand its local crude oil operations. We strongly urge you to denounce Exxon's attempt to put our communities and ecosystems at even greater risk by trucking nearly half a million gallons of offshore-drilled crude oil on our public roadways every single day. As you know, the reason why Exxon seeks to further congest our public roads is because of the industry's failure to safely operate their Gaviota Pipeline that spilled over 143,000 gallons into our environment in 2015. While there is no safe way to transport crude oil, in an ideal world, it would stay in the ground. Literally, the least safe way to transport it is by truck. And the county EIR for the proposal states that trucking this oil is even more likely to cause a spill than a pipeline. However, I'd encourage the council to not be misled by the EIR, which erroneously underestimates the probability of a spill between Los Flores Canyon and the Santa Maria Refinery, including Exxon's supposed safety measures, is just one spill every 52 years. I'm not sure how they got there, but that is just not commensurate with reality. CHP reports that along Exxon's proposed route, there were 216 trucking accidents in the past five years alone. And just a few months ago, an oil truck crashed on Route 166. And just a few months ago, an oil truck crashed on Route 166, spilling more than 4,500 gallons into the Kiama River upstream of the Tweedle Reservoir in an area without cell service, further inhibiting the cleanup effort. Exxon's operations in Gaviota have also long been the largest producer of carcinogenic greenhouse gas emissions in the county. Even if everything goes according to Exxon's plan, which it won't, who sees most of the benefits? A $350 billion company profiting off the exploitation of our natural resources. But when, not if, there is another spill, who pays the real cost? It'll be your constituents who have to share public roadways with these dangerous trucks. It'll be the many endangered species and delicate habitats along this route, and it'll be our coastline supporting over 16,000 jobs in this county that'll be put at risk. I look forward to working together with all of you in this new role to help engage our young people with our local government to address the many challenges facing our city. But I want to be frank, in the year 2020 in Santa Barbara, there is no excuse for voting to expand corporate crude oil operations after all the damage it has already brought on our community. Santa Barbara Young Democrats strongly urges you to unanimously adopt this resolution to pressure the county to reject Exxon's reckless endangerment of our environment, public health, and the Central Coast reputation as a community of sustainability and innovation. Please do not allow our local government to become a rubber stamp for corporate propertioring. Thank you for listening, and please vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Bocky. Another speaker?
Our next speaker is Katie Davis. Katie Davis, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Katie Davis, Chair of the Santa Barbara Sierra Club Group, representing thousands of members and supporters in the city. We support this resolution for the following reasons. One, oil spills. As noted, Santa Barbara has a long history of opposition to offshore oil and has passed numerous resolutions over the years. The last one in 2017 kicked off a wave of nearly 100 West Coast cities passing such resolutions. This project would restart Exxon's aging offshore platforms at a time when the safeguards put in place after the Gulf oil spill had been rescinded. Federal oversight is severely lacking, and Santa Barbara's tourism economy is already struggling. The last thing we need is to introduce additional oil spill risks. This resolution is consistent with Santa Barbara's longstanding position. Two, climate change. Santa Barbara is also a leader in climate action, whereas Exxon was the largest facility source of greenhouse gas emissions in the county prior to shutting down in 2015. The Santa Barbara could meet its ambitious climate goals, and yet emissions would rise if this project is approved. We need to reduce emissions, not roll back the clock in this way. Three, public safety. The 101 is a critical transportation corridor to and from the city of Santa Barbara. Trucks are the least safe way to transport oil. They pose a threat to Santa Barbara's commuters, and commerce tanker accidents shut down the freeway. They spill hazardous and flammable materials, and they risk igniting fires that could spread to Santa Barbara. In fact, a branch fire burning north of us and this huge fire, the Apple Fire, south of us, were both started highways. The Apple Fire is diesel. Cannot afford the risk of adding more dangerous oil tanker traffic to our roads that could cause accidents, explosions, and fires. For health, ExxonMobil was also the largest facility source in the county of PM 2.5. This is this little particulate matter that can travel 100 miles. We're only 20 miles from this facility, and it is linked to heart attacks and asthma. A Harvard study finds that even a small increase in long-term exposure to PM 2.5 leads to a large increase in the COVID-19 death rate. So this is a terrible time to be re-admitting 40 tons a year of PM 2.5 from this facility. And lastly, cost. Exxon is not an important source of revenue for the county or schools. Before the shutdown, it was less than 1% all oil revenue of county revenue, and the school district income has actually gone up, not down, since the spill. So it's not an important source of revenue for the schools. Their income is up. But California is spending $100 million of taxpayer monies to decommission after the Venico went bankrupt. So the costs of spills and cleanup far exceed any tax revenue or benefit from oil.
Thanks, Ms. Davis. Is that our final speaker? Mr. Lopez, or did anyone else pop up? Ms. Gorman?
Madam Mayor, we have Mr. Lopez and then one additional speaker, Derek Maxwell.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, Michael Lopez, please go ahead.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to say that local energy jobs are good for the economy. They're good for the community. They're good for working families in Santa Barbara County. In a time when stable head of household jobs and stable economy are top priority, restarting San Ynez Unit, which would provide those stable head of household jobs to members of our community should be too. I think the problem is that we seem to forget and disconnect that opposing these has victims. The victims are people in the community. They're head of household job holders. They're the children in the school systems. I'm not going to buy that nonsense that millions of dollars of income into the school systems that also support emergency services are of no value. That's nonsense. I find it curious, the city of Santa Barbara is vested in opposing something like this when it doesn't even affect it. This trucking is heading north. The communities that it does affect have spent quite a bit of time analyzing the data that's been given to them, and they are absolutely in full support. Buellton and Santa Maria have passed resolutions in strong support of the temporary trucking permit. You know, the "whereas" as I've read were rather fascinating. The permit, as the SEIR points out, would likely displace about 38 tankers coming from even further in the east and would be regulated through Santa Barbara County for safety far more than the trucks already on the road today. That means greater safety, better for the environment, because the reduction in emissions would be lower. Trucking routes must be approved by the county and must follow more than 100 laws and regulations and policies at local, state, and federal levels governing all oil production and transportation, which are among the strictest in the world. I think it makes sense to understand that some of the wording in this thing is so... There's even discussion in "whereas 13" about fracking. There's no fracking in this. This is hyperbole here. This is not a permit for a new drilling process. This is one that's been serving the community safely for decades. You know, another misstatement is that there's 70 oil tankers a day? That's not accurate. There's four to six trucks a day, possibly seven, up to 70 truckloads per day. This application allows us to use our own oil right here in California, where it's heavily regulated by the state and county, rather than relying on oil imported from across the world where we have no control over its environmental protections and receive none from substantial benefits like jobs, funding for public service that our local industry brings to this community. The working men and women of Plumbers and Pipefitters UA Local 114, which by the way are not currently working on those projects, support temporary trucking permit. The missing "whereas," what I'd ask you to do, as I'm running out of time, is take a moment to learn it's not just gas. The products derived from petroleum include highly needed supplies used in hospitals and in all of our homes. Even electric cars are 50% made from petroleum. Do not allow yourselves to be bullied by an extremist minority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker?
Our final speaker is Derek Maxwell. Derek Maxwell, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, council members. So I'm speaking to you as a proud oil and gas industry worker who is deeply discouraged by the seemingly never-ending assault on my livelihood. Look, I get it. You want to stick it to Exxon and big oil because it makes you seem virtuous. But take a step back and think for a moment. You aren't hurting the corporate executives and wealthy shareholders if you say no to this project. What you are hurting is you're hurting the local energy workers who just want to go back to work and the local trucking companies that need contracts with oil companies to stay afloat. Forty people out of work doesn't seem very virtuous to me. Many of you certainly aren't shy about taking money from labor unions. You talk about how you want to promote local jobs and grow our local economy as you demonstrated literally an hour ago when you spoke very highly of expanding local fishing operations. In many cases, the endorsement of labor unions can sway an election. So it is baffling to me that you would turn around and stab local workers in the back by opposing these projects and making it harder for your own constituents to find work. The old saying, "Don't bite the hand that feeds you," comes to mind. Please, I urge you to reconsider your stance on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. No more speakers, ma'am?
Correct, Madam Mayor, no more speakers.
Okay, we'll close public comment and open the floor for comments to our city council. Let's go this way this time. Okay, Mr. Jordan, go ahead. Did you want to speak, or were you just...
I can go now. Sorry. I was just jotting notes and looking at the website. It's unfortunate this is being couched as a service to the community versus while discounting the danger. And I just, I don't know. I'm sure you're reading my face, Madam Mayor, when people make comments and say, "It's not going to be 70 trucks." But I was just online at the SEIR, and the permit says 70 trucks. Okay, and so nobody's making up to 70 trucks. It's up to 70 trucks. And if somebody's asking for up to 70 trucks, there's a reason for that. I also bristle when labor unions want to draw a direct connection between who they are and who the electeds are because they're ignoring the fact that we're protecting an entire coastline of economic, community, and environmental interests here from a company that frankly has zero history of being prepared to either take responsibility for its negative actions or mistakes or be financially responsible in that regard. And that would be my perfect world, is that I'm sure there's a way to, with time and money, to do almost anything. We're going to Mars. But when companies refuse to structure that way to do things in a responsible manner that will address what could go wrong and seek other actions like structuring their companies to limit liability and avoid responsibility, this is just a disingenuous argument. So clearly, to me, this is a supportive option. I'm happy to get our voice in the mix with the county regardless of where the actual rubber is hitting the road because the potential consequences in the long term are all of the Central Coast's consequences, and we should play a role in that decision. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few quick comments, and I'd like to move to pass the resolution, and I thank you for bringing it forward. It's clear to me, these things aren't easy, but we need to move away from trucking any type of toxic material on our roadways. This isn't an attack on petroleum specifically. It is a high-volume amount, and I believe we can't go back. And anything that increases that number, to me, is going back. Schools need another revenue stream. It's not right to have to choose between environmental stewardship and education. It's just a false choice. Without environmental stewardship, we're not looking out for the future of those we educate. It's not a fair choice to make, and we need to advocate just as hard for funding for education as we are advocating for keeping the oil trucks off of our roadways. As we're moving away from fossil fuel as much as possible, that is our sort of collective intent, there will be job pressures. And this is a great, you know, case in time for investing in a green economy, a blue economy, just a different way. These were also the arguments in moving away from nuclear energy. There was tremendous job losses. We need to create those alternate jobs. Again, it doesn't need to be a choice between one or the other. If we're coming strong on this, we need to be just as strong in support for funding education and support for growing green and blue industry jobs. I'll move to support the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second from you, Ms. Harmon, since you're there? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would be very happy to second that. Just a few brief comments, very similar to the comments Mayor Protem Sneddon made. You know, as I often chair, I'm born and raised in North County, so I am very sensitive to the needs of our neighbors up north. And I understand, you know, in a very visceral way, the unique job pressures and economic pressures that exist up north. But the idea that the conversation is a jobs versus environment debate, I think is just so short-sighted. And even my family, my neighbors in North County, I think they all understand we have to get away from that false dichotomy. As Mayor Protem Sneddon said, it doesn't move us in the right direction. We need to be having thoughtful conversations about ways to creatively build a green economy, to think about what a sustainable future looks like. And, you know, a number of public commentators spoke about how strongly we supported jobs just an hour ago. That's exactly right. We were supporting the idea of a sustainable, sustainable job market in our community. And so I just, I bristle a little bit at the idea that we are just saying no to jobs. That's certainly not true. What we're trying to do is take a holistic view of these issues, and we are trying to create something sustainable for the future, something that will leave this world for my daughter, for our children. That's what this is about. And to look for opportunities to produce economic benefit for our neighbors right now in a way that will allow us to see this planet continue. So I just, I really hope that as a community, and I think Santa Barbara's done a very good job of this in particular, but that we can continue to try to move away from this jobs versus environment. It's not serving us. So I really appreciate Mayor Mario, Councilmember Friedman bringing this forward, and we'll be happy to vote in favor, and proud to vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I can thank all of the speakers, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Maxwell. I appreciate your position. I respect where you're coming from. And we're taking a resolution that reflects the values of our city and our culture. And I have to say that I got to know Mr. Lopez very well at a Green Jobs Conference. Maybe it was nine years ago now. And so I know that there's a sensibility that there are good-paying energy jobs that are kind to the planet. So if there's no other discussion, we'll take a roll-call vote. Ms. Clerk?
This is for item nine, motion by Mayor Protem Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Harmon to approve the request from Mayor Mario and Councilmember Friedman and to approve the resolution. Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
I abstain.
Mayor Protem Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
And, excuse me, Mayor Mario?
That was six yes votes and an abstention. Thank you. That passes. I'll be sending a letter to the county with our resolution. So thank you very much. We'll close that item. And now it's for council members to report on the assignments that they've been... Their liaison assignments. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan and then Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had an opportunity last week to meet with, at my request, with Kirsten McLaughlin, the area manager for Cox Communications, and had kind of a list of things on my mind, which started with how the broadband capability is working across the city. If you're working at home like me for three months, you know, there are probably burps now and then in internet service across the city. And Cox is working on that to address that. They are, of course, kind of behind the curve on the suddenness of the broadband need just occurring overnight when March hit and everybody was sent home to work from home. So they are scrambling but recognize it and are working on it. I was also interested in, there's a federal program about to expire that Cox sort of mimicked that had to do with a relaxation of charges for data caps. So once you use so much data in a month, Cox would start charging you more. So once you use so much data in a month, Cox would start charging you more for the data or put on a, a penalty. They were mimicking a federal program that's about to expire, but Cox will be then putting their own particular program in to mitigate the loss of that program. We're recognizing again that we're still in the same situation where we were before, and probably frankly will be until next spring, where the burden on data being used across the city due to so many people working from home is greater than they have capability of it sometimes, and also than their, their typical historical charging fee menu. Then the last thing we talked about was with school starting and having a new kindergartner, presumptive kindergartner in the house who's going to have to somehow how to figure out how to school at home. Cox is also re, re-upping, it's the name, I forget, but they have a program where they welcome new families to Cox, particularly with school ch, school aged children, and drastically reduce, if not for free, offer basic internet service, recognizing again that many families in the community might not have been using them. They might have just been using their phone. Now they're going to have students who aren't back in school, probably, again, through spring possibly, or maybe it should be in school two days a week and at home three days a week. And they're stepping up again to have a, an assistance program that will recognize that draw on their system too, and that many people can't afford just to go out and buy a Cox account to handle that. So pretty cool. They'll have something way more coherent than my notes that they'll put out with their polished, polished PR people that will sound a lot better. Only other thing I sat through last week was the De La Guerra Plaza Subcommittee meeting, just kind of lurking. I'm not on that Subcommittee, but pretty interested, sitting right outside our, our door here, and pretty interested in that. And it's, it continues to gather, I think, you know, it's kind of started slowly, a lot of talk about goals and, and working bullets and stuff. And it is now gathering steam and working on designs and where to do this and what it'll look like, and should we have that? And really just real cool developments there. And I, I think probably Ms. Sneddon could offer some more comments on that, because she's sitting in that as either the chair or the vice chair. And, but I'm, I'm so impressed with the momentum that's being picked up there to move that plaza along to becoming a plaza truly in the meaning of the word rather than just in the name. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just a few things. First was the Beach, Beacon, the Beach erosion authority for clean oceans and nourishment had our, our meeting where we ratified the new fee structure. So we now have an official executive director, and we are looking towards the future of Beacon and how Beacon can be a, a resource for the entire South Coast and Ventura County as well on sea level rise. And a lot of those sea level rise issues in Beacon will have a more major role. Also attended the Central Coast Water Authority monthly meeting. The big news is that the, the contract that with the federal government that allowed us to put water into Lake Kachuma was thought to have expired or going to expire last July twenty fifth or so. And then at the last minute, after relooking at the contract, it turns out that it actually expires two years from now. It's a long story of how that was found, but it was some good eyesight. Everybody missed it, but one last look. And the good news on that is that we now are going to be able to use the work that we were able to do, try to modify that contract. We have two years to come into a contract with the federal government that will allow us to continue to use state water in Lake Kachuma. And then lastly, attended and was presenter at the Las Pecitas Virtual Bike Path Groundbreaking along with you, Madam Mayor. It was a really exciting project. Councilmember Sneddon was on there as well, and just really tremendous, and it's something that we can all look forward to in having just that opportunity in the future to really be able to access our beaches. And it's just something that's great for families in our community. Hats off to our staff for pursuing this, and that project's been in the making since nineteen seventy-four. And the last thing I have is this week's social distancing playlist song is Fleetwood Mac, Go Your Own Way.
Sounds good. That's nineteen seventy-four, maybe. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I also attended the virtual groundbreaking ceremony, Las Pecitas Multi-Use Pathway. Very excited about that project and nicely done. These virtual ribbon cutting ground breakings are a little bit difficult, but I, I think this was a, a great event. And also was in on the legislative briefing call, as many of us are. We did have our sixth De La Guerra Plaza Advisory Committee meeting. I, it continues to be a robust discussion, a lot of stakeholder input, valuable input. And I really appreciate Councilmember Jordan's comments on that. It really has gained momentum, and Councilmember Harmon and myself serve on that committee, and I'm very, very proud of the, the work that's being done there. I think it's, I think the whole community will be excited to see what's happening with the plaza. Let's see, the next, I participated also in the State Street Long Range Planning Initiative meeting. The next meeting on that is August nineteenth at, at one PM. Just like to invite public engagement in that meeting. And just a closing statement to be kind to teachers right now. I think as we're all getting our, I, I also attended for my, for my junior higher, the, the, the orientation meeting to going back to school. It's going to be so difficult for students. And just keep in mind that every teacher would rather be in the classroom with your students. I know myself as a teacher, it's, it's so difficult. And just we're all in this together, just to add. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez?
I just want to report that Councilmember and I, a Councilmember, Ms. Harmon and I were part of a Zoom meeting with the Healing Justice Group on the recent committee that we have been appointed. And we heard their concerns and some questions. It was, it was very productive. After participating in that conversation, I, I want to be very transparent to the community because it's, it's part of who I am and how I work in the community. Prior for me becoming a city council member, I worked directly with community members, with students, and with the Spanish speaking community, especially with families within the school district. And I, I don't think it's a, it's a mystery. I have two family members, relatives that are in law enforcement, and I'm very proud of all my family members, regardless the career that they have chosen. I have family members from working in construction to the fields to law enforcement that are currently serving in, in the military. And I think because I come from that background and because all of my family members being people of color have struggled to get where they're at here in the United States, and it's part of the conversation we're having now, it has kept me very grounded and very grateful of my accomplishments, and I'm very committed to my community. And I made an oath to the community to serve the community, to create community, to bridge those gaps between, you know, this, the city and community members. I really feel we can be a, a city where this gap that we have between the communication or understanding how city government works can really, can really be bridged. My relatives in law enforcement made an oath to law enforcement, and I just want to make it very clear that I don't think my position of being in this committee is, should be an issue because I have relatives in law enforcement. So I, I just want to be very transparent, because when I'm working on a project, I like those that I'm working with to be very transparent with, with me as well. So I just wanted to put it, put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I also attended the virtual groundbreaking of the Las Pecitas Bike Path. And on that note, I've been meeting with some bike organizations to go over educating the public and the youth about bike safety. And one issue that has come up is the bicycle run that they do at the end of fiestas every year that they've been doing for over twenty-five years now. The, some of the original organizers had announced that it was canceled, just like everything else in Fiesta. But they kept getting responses of people saying that they're still going to show up. So they want to just let it be known and have me state that it is canceled. But if people do show up to participate in a bike ride this Sunday, that they use an alternate route that does not go down State Street, that uses one of the side streets where there's just less obstacles like Chapala or Bath. So I just wanted to say that. So it's on the record that it is canceled. And if people do show up, to encourage them to wear masks, keep your distance, and stay off of State Street and take either Chapala or Bath to try to avoid any bottlenecks. Thank you.
Thank you. My report is that I attended the Sustainability Committee, and we had a report from our new Sustainability and Resilience Department, and we actually set a carbon neutrality goal of zero carbon by twenty thirty-five. Very ambitious, but it was something that we, that we had to go for. I met with the new superintendent of the Santa Barbara Unified School District with Mr. Casey. Her name is Hilda Maldonado. Really looking forward to continuing working with her on behalf of our children and families and teachers in the city of Santa Barbara. This morning, the, the county convened a meeting of elected officials focusing on homelessness. And we talked about a lot, actually, a lot happened through the pandemic, still happening. But one of the goals we have is to pool our money, the grants that we might get from the state or the feds to create shelter or housing. The dollars go farther if we pull them all together. Also on homelessness, SB Act, the Alliance for Community Transformation, which is our nonprofit partner in homelessness work. The Steering Committee met earlier this week, and there's updates from various areas. I know Ms. Gutierrez attends the, the East Side one. Ms. Harmon attends the downtown one. So they gave us some updates, and the SB Act is also with Westmont College, starting up the dinner at Alameda Park on Thursday evenings, and that comes with some wraparound services as well. And the SB Act Steering Committee is going to focus on advocating for working for, I'm sorry, advocating for housing for the homeless. And then this morning, we had the Los Niños de las Flores, used to be the flower girls, but now they have boys in it, and they gave us some flowers, and we took some photos up, out in De La Guerra Plaza. So thank you very much, everybody. We will close this meeting, and we're back here on Tuesday, next Tuesday. Thanks. Meeting adjourned.